Twelfth day of August, 5:30 PM in the government center of the town of Lake Placid. I'd ask everybody to please make sure your phones are either off or unvibrate. If you're wearing a hat, I'd ask you to remove it while you're in chambers. And do we have Keith Carrigan here? Okay, he's not here. Mr. Attorney, would you lead us in a prayer, please? If everybody would please rise for the prayer and the pledge.
A ruler of the universe, bless our town, our community, our council, and please guide us all as we implement democracy in Lake Placid. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Holbrook.
Here.
Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Councilmember Worley.
Here.
Councilmember Charles.
Here.
Councilmember Eberhart.
Here.
Okay, consent agenda one, A through E.
I just have a couple of questions for Rachel on that, if I may. So, just looking at the financial reports, when I look at the totals of the revenue for the current budget to date, which is 10 months into the budget, the budget is for revenue is 12.7 million, and to date through July, 10 months of the year, we spent six and a half million, I mean, we've received six and a half million. So, is there any risk in the remaining two months of the fiscal year, us receiving the remaining revenue?
Usually, the revenue is received. In September, we'll get another quarter revenue coming from the state, and there are also some requests from funds is out there. So, we're waiting for the state to reimburse for some of the grants.
Okay, so, so next month, probably, you know, we're 11 months in, it may be the same question.
Okay.
Okay, and then on the reverse side, am I good? On the expense side, it's something similar is, so, the budget is 12.7 million, which is the same as the anticipated revenue, and the year-to-date spending is only 7.1 million, and two more months left. So, do we anticipate underrunning the budget, or do we, same thing, anticipate expenses coming in, in the last two months, in order to meet the budget versus even overrun it?
Unless they have some projects that end works, or in, within the bid process or what have you, then eventually, they should get done. So, sometimes, there's projects that goes until the next fiscal year. So, I'm not sure which projects those are right now.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, on that is for spending to date, with only two months left, we're sitting at 56 percent, so we're way underspent. And maybe we keep a watch on this for one more month, and then ask the staff for any areas that they think they're not going to spend, then I'm certain there's a lot of other areas within the town that we could spend that. So, just something for us to watch.
Take a look at it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I had no other questions on the consent agenda number one. And I'll make a motion to accept its consent agenda number one.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the podium? All right, seeing none, we'll take it at the audience. Seeing none, bring it back. Pull the council, please.
Councilmember Charles.
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Councilmember Worley.
Yes.
Councilmember Eberhart.
Yes.
All right, I guess we've got our favorite tower person here. If you'd like to come up now, we'll go ahead and let you do your, your tower update. How are you today?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I made a PowerPoint presentation with, got more pictures than anything. My secondary producer likes pictures better than that. Can I pass these to you guys and talk to them?
Sure.
Is that okay?
We can't put it on the overhead? You don't have it?
I don't have it.
Okay.
Next, Chuck Sverk. There's a follow-up. I was in front of you guys, visited with you guys in, in May 13th. That time, I was expecting grandfather again. My daughter had her child and my third grandson, they're both healthy and well, and it was a great moment for us, so I apologize for having the gap between May and now to before you again. But, a lot of things got done, progress got done, and these pictures aren't in any necessary order. I just thought I'd give you some visual, since that thing's 250 feet in the air, and we see it in our cars, or on foot from down below, and everybody's curious about, everybody wants to know about, so I thought I would just put some of the pictures in there and, and talk to them and tell you what's going on with it and what's saying. The first picture on the front has no rhyme or reason, which is on the cover page. That's kind of was representative of what it maybe looked like 18 months ago. Things I'd like you to note and see on it is, there's a lot of telecommunications equipment on it, hanging on it. There was a open that used to sprawl across the top that represented the tower, the restaurant down below, that was with stuff, wire and lath, stucco there, that butterfly-looking thing in the, in the middle with the decorative block, which I think there's a picture in here later is more representative of what it used to look like. So, a storm hurricane came through, and we took that down years ago. But, the main thing that's been going on as it relates to the tower is this decommissioning of the telecom equipment. And there was a conflict with telephonic, telecom equipment, and people going to the top and viewing it for fire and, and issues and legal issues and stuff above my pay grade, you know, 15, 18 years ago, but the two couldn't coexist. So, the opportunity arises, and as we speak, and we talked about, I made a conscious decision as you guys, as a board, has granted the cell phone companies to find other homes and direct other towers, et cetera, et cetera. I think there's a, there's a tower just a few hundred yards behind the Lake Placid Tower, and I think most of those telecom companies have moved to that now. AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint, and the last one just to come off the tower was T-Mobile. And when I was in front of the, the board on May, we talked about they would do this second half of June, or thereabouts, well, to, to give you an update and status, they did come, the second half of June, two cranes, extensive scaffolding on the inside to take some of the equipment down, and it took about a two-week duration, but that equipment is down. And not only, we made a deal with them and spent additional money out of our pocket, we went and cleaned up and took a lot of the telecom equipment that was abandoned by other people that decommissioned, that didn't do their full job per their lease or their legal requirement to take it down. So, we took that opportunity, joint ventured with the, well, T-Mobile, they were very cooperative, and was able to take the, the lion's share, or if not, the majority of it down. And we'll see some pictures later on the presentation that represent that. But, you'll notice the dishes, and you'll notice the rails were in, in disrepair and of discolor, and you can see the staining of the walkway around there, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, if this was standing on the ground, it's seven feet tall, you know, you get a painter out there and you get pressure clean it, and you put some new paint up there and cheap fix, and away you go. But, being 250 feet suspended in the air, it's a little more challenging than that. So, the next page is just some brochures I found inside the shopping center some 12, 15 years ago, and they're just note of interest. There's no specific reason for them being in, I thought they're part of the history, and you might appreciate them or see them. The far, the picture on the far left was interesting, and I think it's going to be relative to some of the conversations that we had in May, talking about a renovation to the top, what's really involved in that. As you can see, that picture on the left, up to what is that walkway, was built in one piece, and is built in 1961. So, potentially, what's on top from there up is a cap, and it can be modified and things could be done to it. They're not integrally one part and can't be separated. So, I threw that up there, I just happened to come across it, I thought it would be kind of interesting and see part of the history of, of the erection and, and the architecture of this, of this tower and structure. So, I know time is valuable, so we'll move on. I kind of cheated or gave you a brief update as far as the carriers being decommissioned and coming off the tower. As I mentioned, AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint, T-Mobile, all tell, there were about seven or eight in, in all, and there were some smaller carriers or repeaters, and we still have up there, for example, the amateur, amateur radio that we've always donated and, and have supported, it's been up there. So, there's still some smaller features up there, but the big stuff, that, the stuff that's visual, the stuff that's attached to the side of the tower, whatever, has now been 100 percent eradicated or, or removed. So, picture on the left, I want to give a special kudos and a special thank you. You have a patriot here in your town named John, and I always say his last name improper, and I hope to get it right, Kaput, Shaput? Anyway, he's a native resident here of, of Lake Placid for some period of time, I think the mayor is well aware of him. This guy is unbelievable. This guy tends to that tower like it was one of his children. So, he is in the business of tower climbing. We paid six or $7,000 to fabricate some special equipment, and in that picture in the far left, you can see John, and John's had some medical issues, and that didn't stop him. He got up there because he loves this town so much and loves that tower so much, he was part of this effort that we did to clean that. So, a special shout-out to him, but that's him depicted on the left. He's harnessed in, we built special engineering apparatuses that were bolted to the side of the building for safety. The ladder that you see there is just not a ladder, it's a special configuration, tube mold and form in there, and this guy, not being 100 percent at his health, was part of this effort for a month. That's how long it took us to paint that surrounding walkway around it and underneath. The next picture in the middle, I'm not going to spend any time, that was just an example, that I would, I think that was AT&amp;T equipment, big repeaters, lots of cable, it's dirty, yada, yada, yada. The picture on the right is kind of work in progress, this is probably at least 60 days old, and the only reason I note that is, again, the antennas that are up on there and on the side of those platforms, you know, have now since been removed. So, moving on to the next page, what's next? I'm back here in front of you again today to try and provide you an update. So, paint is the next thing we're working on. And again, as I spoke, if I was seven feet off the ground, it would have been done yesterday. But, what's noteworthy in that picture, if you'll notice, is that walkway all the way around it is painted gray, so that's fresh, pressure cleaned and, and treated, and two coats of paint. And again, special shout-out to John, he was one of the people that helped us make that. He's not a painter, by the way, but he was willing to help us paint to make that look better. Those are new rails or, or OSHA standards or whatever that were part of maintenance, and, and those have been eradicated and put up. But, if you'll note, the crane that's in the picture, there was two cranes to take all this equipment down. This alone, just decommissioning their equipment, was over $35,000 effort, to pay for the two cranes and to pay for the internal rigging on the inside that took equipment that you can't see in these pictures, that was also taken down during this decommissioning. I will note, because I'm going to get back to it later, that you can see how the bricks are kind of cleaned right up and around the walkway, because the rain doesn't get to them, it doesn't stick, and et cetera, et cetera, as the, down there a little bit further, they're kind of dirty and, and kind of an antique kind of looking or whatever, but the next point, I want to stay on paint for a minute. So, we painted the walkways, as I said, we pressure cleaned the inside. I should have some new pictures for you, these are, again, about, the crane is here, so this picture is from June or July. My next meeting with you, I will have pictures of this pretty much done. We painted the inside wells of the top of the tower black. I reached out to, and again, I want to get their names correct, Jennifer Bush, your Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, and a Keith Godson, and he is the artist or, or on your mural council that you have around town. So, I collaborated with the two of those and said, hey, now that we're getting ready to paint this, and the reason I bring this up, and we're still on paint, is those vertical pieces from the walkways up to the top are going to be finished pressure cleaning, they're just about there, patched to a certain degree, and that's just CBS block like anything else, and a fresh coat of paint. So, I thought to myself, hey, is there something that would be special to the town? Is there something that a color, is there something symbolic, is there something that, if there is some kind of path forward with the public in the tower, that means something to me? You know, when my wife asks me what color we should paint the master bedroom, she's really not asking me. She's giving me her opinion of what color it should be. So, like this, I know this is a very significant symbolic icon to the town of Lake Placid. I am very open and receptive to taking paint considerations, because I'm not partial to any one color after the other. I did reach out to Jennifer, she put me on to Keith, he said, hey, that's a great idea, I don't want to make that decision by myself, I'm afraid somebody won't like my choices, I'm very, very busy, but I'm happy to donate my time, I'd like it better if we collaborate or, you know, have some kind of workshop, et cetera, et cetera. So, just sharing that information with you. That's the stage we're at, in the next 30 or 60 days, this could receive paint, and that will be a very significant. Moving to the second line item on that chart, bath. I own a warehouse up in New Hampshire, and I did a $2 million renovation, and while we were going on that, the police department came to me and the fire department says, hey, this is a great opportunity for us. 185,000 square feet, you're going to be doing this renovations, it's going to be empty for a time, we don't get many opportunities to practice or train on facilities like this. Would it be okay if we got your liability insurance, et cetera, et cetera? We work together and train our officers and do some training for fire, rescue, police, hostage shooter-type situations? We said, sure, that would be no, no issue with us. So, we worked together, our renovations went on, they got their training in, and it was a good experience. The reason I bring that up here in front of Lake Placid today, I am scratching my head as hard as I can, and trying to be creative, trying to think out of the box. I would love to give that tower a bath. I would like to give it and somehow pressure clean this, and we're trying to figure out, we don't have, we don't have city water there, so we don't have pressure served by the, the water tower, so that gives us some limitations. But, I didn't know if maybe, and maybe it wouldn't be a resource that would be just subject to Highlands County, maybe it could be another county. I was wondering if we couldn't put a reach-out or whatever and repelling exercises in a rescue of a tall structure, if we can get a creative way that we could come and repel off the side of that, or a truck, that's a ladder truck, that could spray, we could work together and we could give this thing a bath on the exterior, and maybe treat it with some anti-mold thing or whatever and keep it the shiny star that it could be restored. It hasn't had a bath since 1961, other than Mother Nature. So, I don't know if that's possible, I don't know if that's legal, Mr. Harris, I don't know if that's something you would entertain, but I just want to put it out there. Third, lights. Mr. Kaput, again, about three or four years ago, came to us and said, hey, we'd like to honor or recognize the, the high school and in their colors. There used to be colors or LED lights from all four sides projecting up on the top of the tower, I think it was green, if I'm not mistaken. We took those lights down when we were re-maintaining and doing maintenance on the rails, while we're decommissioning this, get it out of people's way for safety, et cetera, et cetera. We're at a point that we're just about ready, after we give it a paint and maybe a bath, if we could, to putting that back up. And I'm told, again, before my day, before my watch, there was at one time a pedestal with a, the light, electricity is there, and it used to have a beam of light that shot up the whole tower, up towards the top, in other words, illuminating the entire tower. We bought and have that and are prepared and could put that back up again. Any concerns, any pushback on that, any input to that, before we do it or if we do it, et cetera, et cetera? Again, would like to put that out there for collaboration or discussions and talk. Last but not least, design considerations. This is a little complex, but not. I don't know if you can see in that same picture there, see the decorative brick that's below the walkways, that goes all the way down to the bottom? That's nothing more than held in a channel, and it's a half-brick, a decorative brick to give it some pattern. That used to also be between the, the vertical concrete towers up there at the top, and then they lab that, and then they put stucco on it. Did I put a picture in here of the postcard? I did. Flip to the next page or the last page. I know there was some pushback when this was done and painted, again, it was before my watch or before my time, but if you'll notice up the top of that walkway, see there where that turquoise solid color with, was an archway? That was created by that stucco that was put on to that decorative brick, and it was nothing more than just painted. And so, that, what it did is it hid some of the walkways and some of the things that are in between those towers, and it gave it a certain look. So, we removed that because the hurricane, you know, six, eight, 10 years ago, had done damage to it, and some of the pieces were falling down. It's been removed years ago. We also took the decorative brick down for the same reason, in a channel. But, what could be done in there, it's about an eight-foot gap in between, there's four sides to it, we could screw or concrete or anchor bolt into their aluminum channel, which could be a design. We could do something that had Lake Placid LP for the town of Lake Placid. Again, another opportunity or another consideration to put a label on it or put something decorative to it that people saw when they went by, you could backlight it, there's, there's a million opportunities and a million ideas to do it. What stands in between doing that? Two people or five people or 10 people, all green on that, which we know is challenging in today's day and age, and money. So, again, I put that out there, those are my ideas, my four considerations, because again, we are at the final lap. This is a multi-year project that it took to decommission these, the telecom equipment off there. We're ready to put a coat of paint on it, we're ready to put some lights on it. If there's some design considerations, we even looked at the crown and the top, what to do with that, but it's in very good order, it's not pitted or rusted, because it's aluminum, so that we live with and that we stay with at the moment in time till we get different champion or different ownership. But again, something in between, but if nothing else, those vertical columns that go from the rail to the top, it looks in a picture like, ah, no big deal, just get up there and we'll get it done by Wednesday. But, it's still 30 feet in the air, there's some cleaning to it, getting water up there and considerations to get it cleaned off and prep it proper so that it holds the paint. These are all, you know, things that we've been diligently working on. So, I apologize for you, the pace, but we have made tremendous headway. The, working around even taking the telecom equipment down, it wasn't like giving them notice and say, take it down next Friday. We had to work within the leases and the contracts, and when they could do it, when they could turn up their equipment someplace else. So, we've jumped all those hurdles, and then we've made it past that, and it's all safely down, and it's all been done by contractors of OSHA standards, part of the contracts and the leases with the telecoms, they, they, all in all, did a great job, other than when it wasn't convenient for them, they left stuff up there they didn't need to. But, I think what you're going to see as a council, and what you're going to see as a public, and what you're going to see as the people, is a clean slick building again, and we could give her a bath and, and put some paint on it, put some lights on it, and I think for the next 20, 30 years, you would get a lot of fulfillment, a lot of enjoyment from the people. And again, I'm, I'm coming tonight with no ask. I'm going to ask you to fund this, I'm going to ask you to do that, I'm throwing out ideas. I need resolution on this, however, sooner than later, because that leads us to the, this is the, the, the seed of the avocado, the avocado is the shopping center. And, you know, I've been working with, with Kevin and staff, and, you know, we've, we've done some improvements to it to just clean it up, but the intention is to put it on the market. And if we go to the last page, I'm open for discussions, any updates from the town, the last time I left here, you guys were going to look into some considerations of insurance or, or items, what it would be to maintain, what appetite you would have if, if any, of having some kind of ownership or stake in a tower. I guess that would leave a conversation for workshops or committees so that we could collaborate if that was, saw as beneficial, legal. Mr. Harris, you and I have had a few meetings and encounters, and anything, I'm not stepping on any toes, if there's anything that you are concerned about or not concerned about, rather hear it sooner than later. We'd like to bring it to the market fourth quarter of this year or first quarter of next year, but I would really like to have a narrative for the town and for whoever's buying the center, what's going on with the tower. And that, the doors are opening, because it could be open to the public in theory, and with technologies, as I spoke the last time I was here, with technology, maybe it's not an answer that people, excuse me, are going to go to the top of the tower, maybe it's cameras up there, maybe it's something they could control from their computer and they could change and, and move a cam around and take pictures or put it on their business stationary or whatever. So, that's a little bit of an update, I think there's tremendous progress, you know, we're doing our nickel and our dime thus far, and we would like to finish it and make the tower. And again, having clarity and vision as to what it can or can't be is important to sell in it, because I could have sold the center five years ago, or three years ago, or two years ago, put it on the market, and what I get, I get. But, I really want it to be a good marriage between whatever that center becomes going forward and that tower. So, ingress, egress, if nothing else, right? If you have somebody that's going to knock down that center and rebuild it, you know, how many feet from the tower can you get access to the tower? Is there, is there an easement between the two of them for the tower? Are they separate entities, are they together, is it the same owner? All good questions, and, and all not 100 percent answered, just brainstorming and, and coming up with ideas so that we can properly position that to the public and, and get everybody's needs taken care of together, hopefully. That's all I have, I'm happy to entertain any questions. I'm not an expert at this, I, I'd love to come up here and say that I've owned 22 of these before, and here's what we did before on the other 21, here's the roadmap. I didn't, and I don't, and this is a unique piece of property, as you know, and it's probably replacement value from the engineering or whatever, I've had engineers look at it or whatever, probably two and a half to $3 million to re-resurrect it, should it ever be. The good news is structurally, she's sound as can be. It needs some love, it needs some lipstick, and it needs a plan, and we're trying to diligently work on that, and this is why I'm here in front of you today, as a follow-up to the May meeting. I'm happy to entertain any questions, if you have any.
Anybody?
Yeah, I'll jump in. First off, congratulations, I'm a third-grad child, that's exciting, and thanks for coming back and, you know, giving this update, and, you know, you can see the improvements, and I appreciate, you know, what's been taking place. I personally would like to see something done with the tower, I think, just like you've said and we've said, it's significant, it's symbolic, and it's an icon, and there's only, what, three in all of Highlands County? So, today, the actual, I mean, because somebody came and said, oh, we could spend $3 million and put a revolving restaurant, and we, you know, so there's degrees of what you could do, right? You could just take it as it is, use it as, you know, going to the top, or you can look at, you know, something more grandiose. I, I would like to see at least the basic. My, my question, so, so the top is functional, you know, the elevators are functional, so it's all working, and I appreciate, you know, the cleaning up the bath, I was chuckling when I read that, I'm like, a bath, and that's like, it makes a lot of sense. Is there a building still at the bottom? I haven't been over there lately, it used to be the bottom had the small restaurant, the gift shop. Is that still intact, and if so, what condition is that in?
To be frank, it's rough, it's a 1961 footprint. Like anything, you reach a point from a developer standpoint, functional, functional and architecturally obsolescence. It's CBS, it's solid in, in, in that, again, it has good bones, so if the roof were peeled off and the trusses were taken off, you could add a few feet to it, and you could put a new facade on it, you wouldn't be able to tell it from publics across the street. To go in there and think you're going to put a handyman in there, and, you know, two months later, he's going to put open for, open for business, is probably not realistic. I would say the magnitude, again, this is a little bit in my wheelhouse, a little bit what I do, I'm a residential builder, I've done quite a bit of commercial, not quite a bit of commercial, that's misstated, I've done quite a bit of residential, some commercial. And like I said, I owned a warehouse, for example. My guess is, it would probably be somewhere in the magnitude of $60 to $100 a square foot to renovate it. It's 14,000 square feet, the base, it had a restaurant, to your point, Ms. Charles, it had a gift shop in there, and it had maybe another half a dozen mom and pop businesses in there, you know, once upon a time. It's there- It's there and it's intact, the restaurant opens up to the tower. So one concept or one idea would be to knock down the 14,000 square foot, uh, retail shopping center and working with Kevin and staff and, do I see Dana out here? There's Ms. Dana. Um, I guess technically speaking, it could be, it's almost, it's a little over two acres gross. Kind of including the tower, so it could technically house up to 45,000 square feet of mixed use of some kind. There's been concepts or, uh, designs of maybe having two separate buildings and leaving the tower in the center with like, ooh, excuse me. Tables around it or something where people could do a restaurant or sit and have lunches or something like that. Um, it could be just one piece and opened up to it, the Chamber of Commerce could move down to the bottom of it and take 2,000 square feet out of what could be 20,000 or 30,000 or 40,000 square foot new center if that's the case. The market will tell us what they want and, and they're gonna do studies and they're gonna see how much traffic there is and what it can warrant and what's your, your needs are, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I did consult, um, Advantage Realty, Carlson, I think is his name, seems to have done quite a bit of commercial in the area. He's actively aggressively after us to list it, list, 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 and I said, hmm, not without a plan. Um, so I'm trying to figure out how those would coexist. So people were misled, I think, when it said open at the top and thinking there was a restaurant at the top. The restaurant was always at the bottom. People came in there, they had lunch and while they were waiting for their table or dinner, they went up to the top, they took pictures and they went in the gift shop and came home with the t-shirt, uh, et cetera. They charged back then $5 a head for a person to go up to the top. And it was meaningful, it was over $1,000 a week income to them 20 years ago. And this is when I bought it. When I bought it, I got a little squeamish to that and then at the same time, there were some legal issues about ingress and egress with all the telecom equipment be up there in case of fire with only the elevator and it does have a concrete stairway in amazing shape, uh, sparring up the interior of it. Um, so again, there, there's probably this many rules and this many laws as to what could happen and not happen. I would like to speak to just, I think, put a little water on the simmering fire about making a $3 million nightclub at the top. You know, maybe nightclub was the wrong way to say, and I don't mean to water down anybody else's dream or thoughts. In my humble personal opinion, the total footprint at the top is only around 900 or 1,000 square feet. So I think if you put a significant renovation into it, while it would be really cute and really romantic and, and really breathtaking. Could you drive enough revenue through a single elevator to the top with service and staff, whether it be a restaurant or a bar or an appetizer or some kind of thing? Could you really drive enough traffic and get enough turns to ever pay back an ROI rate of, rate of return on investment towards that kind of capital investment? And I think that would be challenging. Um, to open it nowadays for something to go to the top as a side attraction to something else going on there? $10 or $15 for somebody to go up, enough to pay for staff or somebody that would attend it and, and go with them, et cetera, et cetera, for liability insurance purposes? Very feasible, very possible, I think. Technology, as I said, to go up there and put $10,000 of equipment or $20,000 worth of cameras that could be remote operated from the ground or that people get views or whatever? Very cheap, very inexpensive and very probable. So again, you know, from the range from your basics, as you said, to something that's more extravagant, obviously probably the answer is somewhere in the middle.
Thank you so much for doing all this. I have people around town, I'm sure they might appreciate it a lot.
My pleasure.
Everybody loves that tower.
Thank you.
Is it possible to take some of your time someday for me to go up there? I was up there when I was a kid.
Yes, um, I've had that request before and I think I want to take it to the next lap and get it, you know. Things have been coming down, wires were hanging from a safety and a liability standpoint. You know, I, I just, for even my own companies or whatever, I, I've been hesitant. So I think that day is coming, you know, maybe give us another 30, 60 days and get, you know, the next step further or whatever, get it cleaned up and obstacle free. I mean, just until two weeks ago, it had $50,000 worth of scaffolding in the inside for 30 feet up and down, you could barely walk through it or get around it. My, you know, even have my people up there was a liability or whatever, so. We're getting closer to that and I'm happy to share that one when I think we're at that moment.
Okay, one last, um, in your, what is your vision for when you sell off the remainder? Are you going to sell the shops together with the parking lot or separate?
Um, again, I think it comes down to a legal question, ingress egress and, and does the owner of that new center have a relationship with the tower or not, is the tower somebody else's, is the tower custodian of something else? And I think that will dictate how much, whether you need parking for the tower or whether because whoever's running the new shopping center, the tower, they have tentacles to it and they wouldn't need it and it's shared. So I think those are exactly, um, thank you for that point. Those are exactly the questions I'm trying to define and answer before I put on the market. Because once you put it on the market and you sell it, that person always gonna be very pointed on what they want for their needs and for their wants. And of course, they have to come to you and, and grant to, to rebuild and you have to approve it and you have some, some pushback on that. But it's better if you offer it in harmony from the get-go in my humble opinion. That you have a plan and, and people buy into that, that plan and sour. And I think the narrative that I heard when I was here two months ago or three months ago, even if we were to look to donate the tower, which, you know, is a possibility, but you know, a lot of legalities to that and is it economically feasible and, and can I use it, you know, as a write-off, et cetera, et cetera? But there's no sense in donating to somebody that doesn't want it, right? So, um, we see what the possibilities are and then we try and engineer a solution towards what the wants and the, and the the wants and the needs and the desires are. So that's really why I'm back here again, I'm waiting to hear or if somebody wanted to do a committee, I'm happy to come up and give my time and roll up our sleeves and spend an afternoon on it and I know your time is limited tonight and I've taken up way too much. But I just want you to know, I'm taking your interest and your needs seriously, you know, it, it's personal to me as well. I loved that center from the first time I went golfing in Sebring and I took my whole company and staff and had lunch at that said restaurant and we jokingly said, you know what, we should buy this because it's so pretty, we could take our customers. Cause we were building in Leisure Lakes and, 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 um, Lake Placid. And three weeks later, we own the tower, so that's, that's how that came about.
Now, I, I see in one of the pictures, the, the trees down below. So it, in my wishes, it would be that the parking lot was redone. Um, either with little shops and trees and walkways and it's just a big piece of concrete now that's not attractive. So I'd be hoping if you could.
I understand, but correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Harris or, or, or Kevin. Um, anybody that comes in with any kind of plan of any kind of permit of any kind of things, there's gonna be all kinds of, of landscape ordinances and things to get this approved, you gotta do this, this, this and this. So things have evolved and it's happened in every little rural county. You know, you have to have X amount of, to have pervasive surface, you have to have X amount of those green spaces and those trees, et cetera, et cetera. So that makes a hundred percent sense, but you have to know what your configuration's gonna be and where the buildings are gonna be to have the layout. Do a landscape architect, but I am positive that I can't come in front of you and say, oh, by the way, just let you know, we're knocking it down next week and we're gonna build this, this and this, or leave the parking lot as is, you know. Everybody would laugh at me on the way out. So the reality to that is that's, that will be worked out, the plans will not be approved or submitted. Um, uh, or, you know, approved without those considerations put into it. And it's all of it, it's parking, it's turn lanes, it's, it's green pieces, it's, it's ratios of square footage of usable space to parking lot, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot of work and an engineering to, to make it, to do it right. And I'm sure that it's, it's possible and I'm sure we, we can do it.
Yeah, well, you're, you're a developer builder, so you know all the green space rules and all that, but, but for people that it is reassuring to everybody else that that will be considered, that it'll be part of the plan.
You know, in, in defense to that, I do know a lot of them, but every county's a little different, every place that they have their nuances. They're a little bit more passionate about some and some things, their priorities are different or whatever, so. I don't wanna say it's a crap shoot, but it's, it's, until it's done, it's not done. And all those things are, you know, in, into consideration. I mean, the Taco Bell that went just to the north of it, for example, you know, there are a lot of considerations, there's all kinds of trees in there, there's little green spaces. They did a retention area to take their water off the parking lot, which was not in consideration when you built 50, 60 years ago. Working with Ms. Worley, you know, 15 years ago, we put a French drain in there to keep the water out of Lake Clay. These are all part of, you know, evolution and all part of, of making things, communities grow. So this will be no exception. I recognize the significance of this property and I recognize that it's a very prime location and everybody would like to see it, you know, be something special. And I do too, but you know, at the end of the day, the only ask with that is, we don't have unlimited budgets, right? Your budget isn't unlimited and developers not, if you make it financially impractical to do it, it doesn't get off, it doesn't get off the, the, the starting blocks. So there's a balance, right?
Okay, thank you.
I would, I just wanna say thank you for coming today and congratulations again on your grandson, granddaughter, whatever. Um, it, I was by there today, drove around the back. Um, and, and the bottom of the tower, all that shopping center part is definitely in disrepair. There's a, a bunch of just roofing materials, just junked up on the top of the area that's to the far south that used to be, oh, I can remember it being a flower shop, but I'm sure it was several other things, uh, during the time. But, um, the tower looks so much better. And I, I walk in the mornings and, and drive by there to meet my friends to walk and I'm always looking, what color is it today? So I think color is really important and we appreciate you taking, um, your heart in it, we appreciate it.
So to that point, before we dismiss that we go, I mean, I don't wanna leave with more questions and come back in two months and just go round and round. If there's, if there is consideration or there is some kind of subcommittee that we can roll up our sleeves and come with more polished ideas and collaborate as opposed to just pitching something, you know, in a vacuum, I mean, that's, that's what, I think that should be our next goal. As, as the, the town and council and staff and, and me as the owner and, and the people's interest and need, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good next step.
Move forward.
Cool.
Yeah, I would like to thank you as well for coming, being steady and coming back even though with all your family and your personal issues and congratulations as well. And I think this all comes back to, the property is very valuable. The, the, what we need to do is need to decide what to do with the tower so you can sell your property, which as I think at one point you said it'll sell and it will so quickly because it's in a prime location and basically the middle part of the town. So this is the issue, so we, you, to move forward quickly, you're still working on the building. To have us involved, and I know Kevin had started working on, on insurance and maintenance because those are the issues. If a private entity or a foundation or we were to take over the tower, a private entity, then, um, we would have to know all those figures. So I think if you wanted us to do that, then we have to, you know, once you get to a point, we can have access as far as the public being, trying to do something with it. I think we need to have access at some point. And then I do agree, I think we all need to go up to the to, top of the tower as a council. Um, and then, you know, we can not talk or whatever, you can talk. Um, the tourist development council may be helpful, um, because that's what they do, tourism. And, but, um, we would need to have access. And I do think if we could figure out what to do with the tower and everybody wants it restored and everybody wants it to be usable, then you can sell your property and have a beautiful plaza there. I know when you first came to the, you had a plan. I remember your plan before the, the bottom fell out, that you were gonna tear, you know, redo the whole thing. So we could still do that, but I think as far as the timing goes, I do think that people, if you can get them up there as far as the public having any ownership in it, we have to give them some access to see basically what they're getting. So anyway, that's just my opinion.
Just a note, I won't be going to the top of the tower. God made me close to the ground for a reason and I'm gonna stay there.
I wanna tell you a true story, I have not been to the top of the tower myself in 12 or 14 years, I have a pacemaker. And with all the telecom equipment up there, like going through security at the airport, they advised against it because it could interfere with the signaling or whatever, so. I did go up there eight or 10 years ago, I've had a pacemaker for almost 18 years now and I was, took ill. Um, or didn't feel well for three days, coincidental, not coincidental, whatever. So now that all that equipment has been removed, I'm actually planning my maiden voyage back up there in the very near future. But I wanted my guys again to get it to a certain point that I didn't go up there and like, what are you guys been doing? So, um, I share your, I share your interest and your concerns, you know, video cameras and, 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 uh, what do they call those things? Those little things that fly around, take the, drones, they're amazing, you know, what they can capture and offer to somebody like you were saying, and me that hasn't been up there. It's an amazing view, it's a piece of history.
I see the picture here, this is good, I, I'm good with the picture.
Yeah, there's, there's a few of us in this room who are here when it was open and we've been up there many times and, uh.
Lakes haven't moved, they're still, this is beautiful.
It is quite a view, it's, uh, it's quite an attraction and, uh, I, I just hope we can work together. And maybe what we need to do is come up with a, a citizens.
Committee.
Committee and come up with some ideas. But I, I like what you did with the lights. What John did with the lights.
Right, yeah, that was, I give credit to John, somebody in the town came to him and John asked me if they could do it and I was of course not opposed to it.
Had a lot of good comments about the.
So we can put those back on.
Different color lights, different time of the year, doing different things. I think that was a, a great idea.
That was really.
I applaud you for that.
And we can re, return to that, but again, the next step is we need a coat of paint up there. And if there's preference on the color, if not, maybe we just go white and that does it for now and it's clean and it looks good and we put the lights up. And then something could always be repainted again. But again, it would be like painting your, your ball that you have in town, your water tower, right, your water. It's not an easy task and it's not cheap and they're gonna charge you really, you know, charge us really well for it. So to get it right the first time, that's gonna at least suit somebody for a small period of time would be much better than saying, well, it's painted. And as my wife would come through the room and say, that's not the color I wanted. And so we repaint it, so.
So do we need a motion to convene a committee to work on this?
Well, that's, yeah, that, that's up to you if you want to.
It's coming fast, yeah, I would like to, I would, you know, based on his presentation and the recommendations, especially with some decisions.
See if we get some volunteers for the community and.
You know, Eva can put something out on next door, we can get some, um, we can have Dana or Kevin lead the committee.
If, if we could get a volunteer committee that is a, a committee and not under sunshine, would that be, go faster? Or how can we do this?
Probably would go faster, but probably wouldn't be legal if you're doing a committee for recommendation to the council.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, we'll just have to look into that.
So, so. So are you saying we should not endorse a committee or we should?
How about a workaround, just like the, the merchants association, they don't, they would help him and not report to us.
I wouldn't refer it as a workaround, I would call it not our committee.
I mean, I have no problem with putting it under sunshine, I mean, I don't have prob, I would just like to do something tonight so we move forward, not just agree and then, and we're gonna walk away and say, well, who's doing what? You know, because he's got decisions, he wanted on paint or he can go do that. You know, he talked about the light going up and some different things and I, I think I heard Kevin's running in, you know, different costs. Um, so I think that there's so many pluses to move forward and I don't wanna miss his opportunity to sell it. You know, he's got here, bring to market fourth quarter, that's coming up fast, so.
Pam, did you have something you wanted?
Pam Fincher's, member of the public. Y'all have had the liberty of looking through pictures in our presentation. The rest of us have been in the audience looking at or just listening and not really getting grasping what's really happening. Um, the tower would be great to be reopened, that's great. This town council, this town has a lot of other issues that are priorities in my opinion that keep on getting pushed back. We keep on opening up new issues and we haven't finished the rest. We have a water quality pro, uh, problem in Lake Placid area. Lake Pearl just had a blue green, um, the algae bloom. There's just a lot, I understand, especially the new town council members, you want to accomplish the splash pad, the dog, dog park, the tower. But there has to be a, a priority list, we need to finish the things we've already started. I would just ask, ask that and before you start going on with the committee, the people in the audience. I would just ask, ask that, and before you start going on with the committee, the people in the audience, we didn't get to see any of the photos. The people at home that are watching this, they didn't get to see anything either. So I think it needs to be more organized for you to ask town council to come up with a committee or recommendation. Thank you.
So would it make better sense that we would just table it for now and bring it up next time? And that way we could, we could address those issues.
Get a chance to get some information out, if you, if that's what you want to do.
I would suggest, I would suggest we table it.
I would suggest we put these charts out on Nextdoor and let people know that this was a presentation. I mean, this is an excellent presentation.
It would, I think the website would be better, not just-
And it's unfortunate that it wasn't able to be put on the screen and that, so I don't disagree with that at all. Because the transparency is something that we want. I'm just concerned of tabling it for another month, it just puts it behind another month. So we've got our town website, we've got the Nextdoor. I, I, me personally, I like to go faster versus delay it.
I, I would suggest putting it on the website and if you want to refer the people from Nextdoor to the website, because Nextdoor, you know, is a limited audience. You have to join Nextdoor, so the website would be a more transparent, if you like that word, place to put it.
Councilwoman Worley had a suggestion as far as getting the word out.
Let's give, let's give one to John, our newspaper reporter. Let's give him the packet to help with that.
We have some extras, we have extras here somewhere.
I mean, I think all of that's good because some people don't get the paper, so that'll cover them. Put it on the website, these charts, if they were part of the packet, then people would have been able to see them. And then ask for people that are interested to, you know, help produce some ideas to get with Eva. I mean, because we are going through the budget right now, right? So we're going through the budget process, so if there were to be, needed to be some funds allocated, then that's where you would make sure they're included in the budget.
If I, if I can suggest this, I put those photos together literally yesterday or touched them up today because I thought if I could speak to them, I could help understand better. It's my oversight and apologies. Is there a method or the process that, let's say I came back another month where I can get you better photos? Those photos are already six weeks old and there are better photos to be had there. If I were to submit it, would it be able to be put up on this screen for the next time? Did I submit a file or a memory stick or something like that?
Yeah, you'd have to get them to them ahead of time, so that-
I, I don't- Okay, so I'm willing to do that, if, if that helps. And, and maybe as opposed to releasing it to the public, which again, I'd use some of those pictures to illustrate again to the narrative to the public's defense, which I apologize, it's hard to understand it without the words, but I could put at least current pictures together and show where it's at. Do something a little better maybe next time.
So maybe it's premature to give this packet to the newspaper, rather give them a different set of pictures?
Freedom of the press, I have-
It was up to you, I, maybe-
I have no say in that, I'm just saying that I can bring you more current photos next time and submit them to you earlier and then perhaps just answer the, the callouts to, so that they could follow along, I, I could come back.
But are you okay with, I think maybe, are you okay with having?
Indifferent, it's up to you guys.
I, I still think we would make a, a better decision with more input. If we just table it till next month, we'll have the pictures, we'll put it out to the public, tell people, anybody that wants to be interested in getting on with this project, come to the meeting. Let's talk about it a little bit at the meeting and maybe they can even determine when they might want to meet later. You know, just to, to make sure that the word gets out to everyone that we are going to talk about it. And if you want to have some input, want to be part of the process, to come to next month's meeting.
Just a quick comment if I may, we can certainly put that out there and within anticipation of a committee, if you wanted, so you're not waiting. You know, I don't think you need a motion if you want us to go ahead and just put out interest in a committee for the tower, kind of discussion. And we can post those pictures as Chuck gets them and see where they go. As far as insurance goes, we have talked to PRM. The only way to get an accurate estimate is to have a civil engineer come in and do an evaluation of the tower. So I think we didn't ask them, that's a little further in the process. If we decide that we, the council decides they want to pursue that seriously, then I think we go there. They will insure the tower, we know that. It's based on cost estimates, 5,000, a million, something like that, you know, so that's doable. Elevator maintenance is simple, some of the other maintenance things are not difficult to put together when we kind of have a direction. So I, I haven't spent a lot of time on it, but we did talk to PRM, we did find out, yes, we can insure the tower and we can get an estimate. But we need to have, Mr. Sperks had, I think, two engineers come in and look at it for his own benefit and make sure it's available, but the insurance company will not do it without their structural civil coming in and looking at it. So that's kind of where we at, but we can certainly put up something on our website and Nextdoor app for people that are interested to come to the next meeting, September 15th?
September 9th.
September 9th. And if they're interested in participating, then they can show that at that time maybe.
Would you include these charts now just as information and then we're going to have a follow-up meeting in September? So in the meantime, any interest comments you have to, you know, not only come to the meeting, but you know, provide them ahead of time.
Tower Development Committee.
Counsel, if I may, Dana Radel, Town Planner for the record. I had a really great opportunity in the month of July to attend a conference. I think I notified all of you about it. It's called the Preservation on Main Street Conference. I've been mulling it over, it's something that I definitely wanted to bring to you, so I wasn't really prepared to bring it to you all tonight. But just as a thought and a potential action item for you to either mull over or maybe make recommendations on as the month progresses is, there is a program called Main Street America. And it is like bridging the gap for economic vitality in your downtown areas while still preserving the legacy of yesterday. And it's almost a little bit similar, a little bit similar to the Chamber, but they each have their own place here in town. And I haven't floated this past anyone, so tell me if I'm crazy for this, but we have a new association starting in town. They came and spoke to us last time about the Merchants Association, but something I realized when I was at the Preservation on Main Street Conference was that all of these Main Street programs are started by grassroots efforts from members in our community who want to do hands-on work to make an actual change, whether that means going business to business and asking for certain things or wanting them to be part of certain programs. It, it's a total grassroots effort, which is exactly like what we have going on with the Merchants Association. I also understand there have been some conversations with the Merchants Association as to how they should be formulated in terms of like a 501(c)(3), if they need an LLC, if they don't do any of those things at all and they're just a group of people that meet to stimulate business in Lake Placid, as is their right to do. So if I were to run into members of the Merchants Association, I might plant the seed of them potentially becoming a Main Street program. If you have a Main Street program, you have an executive director. That executive director would help stimulate revitalization exactly like this, very similar to this, and might be able to spend some of their time sitting with that property owner or that business owner to help them find financing or, like I said, run programs. I think I'd seen some interest in having a golf cart drive throughout town. And someone has to be responsible for putting that on. And the Chamber already does the mural society and keep Lake Placid beautiful and there's only so much we could put in their hands. So I just, I just want to throw that out there as a potential program that we might consider and continue to look into to determine if it can assist in areas like this or if the grassroots efforts we already have going on in town could potentially be reorganized into something like that.
All right, now we'll go to-
Is she wanting to speak?
We've been discussing the tower for a long time and I like the idea for a committee. I don't understand why we can't start a committee now and then we talk about the insurance. We need to start progressing and I think a committee beginning now would help.
I just think we want to get a little bit more organized. And what's your name again?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Rosemary Heath and I live at 588 Sunset Point Drive.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, to get organized, how long do you think that would be? Before the city is planned to become more organized and find out the insurance? Are we talking a month, two months, three months? How long will this take?
Yeah, he's asked for another month, so-
So another month?
Realistically, I think that's what we'd be looking at.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other business on that? All right, we'll go into public hearings. Second reading of ordinance number 2024-07, Lebate Holdings LLC annexation and ordinance of the Town of Lake Placid providing for the annexation, comma, under section 171.004, comma, Florida statutes, comma, of lands contiguous to the Town of Lake Placid, comma, Florida, comma, owned by Lebate Holding, comma, LLC, semicolon, and providing for an effective date period. And again, this is under second reading.
I'll make a motion that we adopt on second reading, ordinance number 2024-07, Lebate Holdings LLC annexation, as read by the mayor.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and second. Any other discussion from the podium? All right, hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Okay, saying none, come back, pull the council, please.
Counsel?
Sorry, Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Uh, next is under first reading, ordinance 2024-13, amending chapter three, clarifying duties of the vice mayor. Uh, ordinance of the Lake Placid Town Council amending chapter three, three in parentheses of the town code by deleting the requirement for a second regular monthly meeting, semicolon, clarifying the duty of the vice mayor when presiding in the absence of the mayor, semicolon, and providing for an effective date period.
I think it was placed by Mr. Harris. Mr. Harris, did you have some comments?
The last meeting when Vice Mayor Worley presided, she asked whether she could vote in the instance of a tie. I did the research, looked at our code, state law, as well as the common law and found a Florida Supreme Court case, rather old, but still, it's the law, that said a person can't hold two positions at once, i.e. councilperson and mayor. And based on that, I believe we should amend the code to make clear so no one forgets. And that's one of the problems. We all know it today, that the vice mayor shouldn't vote and preside, but a year, five years from now, some of us may not be here. So I suggest you put it in code. My practice, generally speaking, is when we amend the code, I print the entire section for context. So you see a lot of things in there that really don't apply to this. That's just the existing code, so you'll know where you are. And I saw one that I'd like to bring up and that is eliminating our second meeting. The last time we visited this, council was ready to say, we're not going to represent to the public, there are two meetings a month because we generally don't have them. And I argued that, well, you ought to keep it on the books in case you need it and you can always just cancel it. I don't think we've had a second meeting in a month since we stopped bimonthly meetings. That's been, what, a decade or so? So I wanted to withdraw that opinion and say, strike it, we don't use it. We can call a special meeting anytime you need and I think that would be the better practice.
Well, I of course agree with this, so I'm going to move that we, have you all, you having? I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we approve on first reading of ordinance 2024-13 as stated.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion and second. Any other discussion from the podium?
I just have a question. So Kevin, can you bring up the section 3, 1.5? And, and Mr. Attorney, this is to you, is, it's, it's not being changed, but it's a clarification here, B. So B says, "The town council shall conduct business in the presence of a quorum. Three members excluding the mayor constitute a quorum." So when we have a meeting that the vice mayor, that the mayor can't make it and the vice mayor becomes the mayor, do we then need three other council people? So in other words, we can't have the mayor and someone else be out?
No.
I just want to clarify, because I know in past meetings-
That's, that's the way I understood it, that's the way I read it, but that's a question for him.
A quorum is generally speaking 50% plus one. You have four council members, so that means three need to be present. There was concern going decades back, I think Clint Smith raised it a billion years ago, whether if you have the mayor and two, does that constitute 50% plus one? And I'm taking the position, no, it does not. In this instance, 50% plus one, if you've got three councilmen, you know, I'd like to think about that before I shoot my mouth off. Because it's a really weird question. I mean, that means-
It's a good question, you mean, it's a good question.
No, it's, it's a very fair question.
No, and when I read that, I'm like, hmm, does that mean then we can never have the mayor and someone else gone? Because then the third councilperson becomes the mayor, so think of it-
And we may want to say whether the 50% plus one rule would let us proceed. We may think, you may think as a matter of policy, hey, if it's a mayor is out and one other council is out, we should not do business.
Right, right.
And I tend to think that would be the better answer.
Right.
And um-
It's not going to change anything in the wording or anything. It was just as I read that, I thought, okay, let's get clarification so we know going forward.
Well, let's add another provision and write that out so that we know the answer and we have established a policy. So I, I would suggest if Councilwoman Worley would modify her motion to approve it on first reading with and direct the town attorney to modify the quorum based on what she said. And I'm not sure what that's going to mean, let me come back with some language.
And I'd like to still discuss it, but I, what Bert said, yeah, I made a motion as stated by the town attorney. Modify my emotion to as stated by this and-
And I'll modify and agree with the sec, with the, I'll second the modified version.
Okay, and then through the years, there was some question and it was decided. Okay, so say that you have three council members and I'm sitting in as mayor, so there's three. And then one of them has a conflict because they have a conflict, they can't vote, they brothers doing- Because they have a conflict, they can't vote, they brothers doing it or whatever. There's still a quorum, and this clearly says, in the presence of a quorum, if somebody has conflict and conflicts out, you know, then you still have a quorum.
You still have a quorum.
And that was a question at one time. Well, if somebody has a conflict, is that still, and they can't vote, is that still a quorum? Well, this, it clearly says they, presence is what it is. So if one of the people, or two, or whatever, that's the way that we were interpreting it, so I don't know if we need to clarify that, but it's, I think it's pretty clear in the, in the current ordinance.
I would, I would agree. I mean, if a quorum and the ability to vote are two different things.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so where are we? We have to call the vote?
Yeah. So any other discussion? Okay, clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Next is ordinance number 2024 dash oh eight. And ordinance of the town of Lake Placid, comma Florida, comma pertaining to the vacation of right-of-way, comma as particularly described herein, comma and as requested by Robert Marshall, semicolon, providing for legislative finding and intent, semicolon, providing for ownership, semicolon, providing the vacation of right-of-way, semicolon, providing for recordination, semicolon, providing for the implementation of administrative action, semicolon, providing a savings clause, semicolon, providing for sovereign's error, semicolon, providing for conflict, semicolon, providing for severalability, semicolon, and providing for an effective date period.
Okay, and if, this would be a tag team, I think, between the attorney, between Dennis, myself, but on your desk, and I'll pull this up as close as we get it, is a little bit clearer picture, give me a minute to get this down, but of the area that we're talking about, so you know exactly where it is. Some of these pictures are not as good. But this is the, from this point back to Oak and this little piece, these two pieces here are the vaca, the alleyway that we're talking about, abandoning it does not include this approximately 60-foot strip?
Approximately 50 feet.
That comes along there, and I'll turn that over to Dennis to elaborate.
Dennis Murray, town engineer. The application is for the vacation of the right-of-way, and it's less 50 foot on that west side. The petition requests for the following reason, the alleyway is narrow, does not meet the minimum standards for roadways within the town, the applicant owns all the property on either side of the alley, and wishes it to be vacated, the applicant would like to combine the properties into one parcel to fence and utilize the building as one property.
So this is a little bit better picture, so you get an idea. So the applicant owns this property and this little triangle. The alleyway goes through here, we do not have any utilities there, but there is power that runs across for some Duke Energy. There is an access door, the reason it stops here is this property owner uses this alley to access their property in here, so that's why that piece is not part of the request, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2024 dash oh eight as read into the record.
I'll second.
We need a second to discuss.
We have a motion and second on the podium, any other questions?
I'll second. I just want to clarify again, what, and I think your last chart in the package is pretty good, it's, because you're not vacating all of that, right? It's like, so I just want clarification of what exactly we're vacating here. That very, I think it's exhibit A that you had, where it kind of shows, I mean, those are good charts to start with, but just the picture of, because the 50 feet, I think, is another business, is that, it's Gator Co., right? So the vacation is stopping before Gator Co. and that, so we'll only have a portion of an alley we still own as a town? I don't know where it is, Kevin.
There's a lot of background, so I'm getting there.
There we go, that, that's kind of a little more helpful. So, so that other picture you had, which shows the little triangle, the, where it's not red, that's the Gator Co. building, and that's the 50 feet? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And so the, so the proposal is to vacate all of the red?
Yes, ma'am.
And then leave the, so we will continue to own that, 50 feet of an alley?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other concerns from the podium? All right, we have a motion and second, but I'll open it up to residents now. And I do have requests to speak from Donald and Melissa Lesby.
Hello. Okay. We own the property?
State your names.
My name is Melissa Lesby.
I'm Donald Lesby.
And the address of its.
600 Main. And I have some pictures for you as well, if I can bring them to you.
Sure.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
We can share.
If it's okay, I'll just read what I have, that way I don't ramble or fumble around. As property owner, that abuts to the right-of-way that's before the council to be vacated, ordinance number 2024 oh eight. I am opposed to this action, and I'm speaking for my husband who is not very fond on public speaking, so. On the property at 600 Main and have operated my business, Gator Co. Lawn and Landscaping, from this location since 2014. For more than a decade, I have utilized this right-of-way in order to receive deliveries to the bay door that faces the right-of-way alley, as well as to enter in and out of my shop with the trucks and trailers necessary to operate my business. Prior to the current owner taking possession of the neighboring property, who now presents requesting the vacation of this right-of-way, the previous owner and I shared the right-of-way daily, as it was needed for the previous owner to receive deliveries and move out shipments as well. It is also shared with the other abutting property owner, John Carnahan, who shares and utilizes this right-of-way as well. The right-of-way has in no way been abandoned nor sat unused. It's used daily and it's vital to the daily operations of my business, as you can see from the pictures. Florida has well-established its acknowledgement of right-of-ways and alleyways and the property owners' rights therein. They govern these outlines in Florida Statute, Chapter 177. I'm requesting that this right-of-way not be vacated, but remain as it is critical for the daily operations of my business. And also, I don't know if you can accept from Mr. Carnahan, who is out of state, sent a letter for you because he is in opposition to this as well, he has the abutting property that you will see that utilizes this alleyway. And I see what you're saying with the 50 foot there, but that's why I have the pictures there, because this has been a, through, a thorough way there. The previous business, and as well as ours, the utilizing of trailers back and forth into that, your 50 feet is not gonna be enough without clogging up Palmetto. So when you have a delivery from a semi truck that's filled with sod or various other things, they, right now utilizing the alleyway, can deliver through there, unload their deliveries, and then go out. If they have to park in the middle of Palmetto, you're going to completely clog that street and so forth. That's why the alleyway has been utilized in such a manner, because you have big trailers, big trucks coming through and through. So in order for them to utilize 50 feet to try to back in and out, that's not going to be feasible. So you are then gonna have, like I said, semi trucks sitting in the middle of Palmetto with whatever it is they're bringing or delivering, as well as our vehicles that have to utilize that bay in and out on a daily basis. And that's why it's necessary, and that's why it has been utilized, it has not sat abandoned, it's not been abandoned, not for one day, we know for 10 years. So that's what we would like you to consider in the vacation of the entire alleyway.
Where is the other business located that she's referring to?
That's a residential.
On this map up here? That, that building?
Yes.
But I, no, he's saying that's a building.
This is the property that belongs to John Carnahan?
That's the other building that you're saying they also use this alley?
Correct, yes.
And they gave you a letter saying?
Correct, he's out of state on business. Was understanding that there would be a second hearing on this and that.
But that's a house, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
A house or a business, I mean, it's a.
No, that's a residential.
That's a house there.
It's a house.
Duplex.
Yes.
And, and that's this person who's opposing it? Okay, I'll pass that down, this is on.
But he would have no right to use the alleyway because he doesn't touch it, would he?
He drives his dump truck and trailer through there when, whenever he needs to use it, he's always done it. He's lived there for 35 years and had access to it.
But he has no right to it because he doesn't touch it, correct?
His property, he does touch.
Where?
Right there, does it not?
No.
No.
He doesn't touch Robert's property? Does Robert own what's in green right there?
Yeah.
No, he doesn't.
No, Robert, Robert owns.
Robert Marshall does, as opposed to Mr. Carnahan.
Correct.
It's kind of a weird parcel, but yes, he owns, he owns all that, so that, that.
So that property does abut to it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So he couldn't go across that property anyway.
So I thought earlier, Kevin, that house building, that whole area, we said that, except for Gator Co., the same guy owns all that. Did I misunderstand that? When you, you were circling, wasn't including that building?
Here's, this is John Carnahan's house.
Okay.
This piece in here, this piece in here, this piece and this piece are all owned by Mr. Marshall.
Okay.
The second, the second little alley coming off the top where your pointer is right there, we don't, we don't ever use that one. That one gets cut off.
The straight line.
That, that's fine. The long one is the one that gets used every day, as you can see in the pictures and all. And like I said, we can't run our business if that alleyway gets closed off, it's.
And what's the underlying reason for the request to the town to vacate the alley? Just more land for?
Yes, at that point, I was gonna ask Robert if he wanted to come forward, but I say he's got his representation here also.
Okay, thank you.
Kimberly Saup, representing Robert Marshall, and Robert Marshall's here also, speaking to, the reason for vacating is, one, is unifying, because it's cut, that's the one triangle that's, that Donald didn't care about, just kind of cuts that piece in, in half, really does no benefit to anybody. And he is going to be looking at fencing it for security. He has four-wheelers that go up and down at night along that alleyway, he's had people, and I can let Robert speak to that, throwing rocks on his roof, throwing them against his doors at night, just, you know, I think it's not the best side of town. And so it's just for security to kind of combine and kind of keep it secure is the main reason, and just make it cleaner than what it is right now. The, the reason why we didn't go all the way through, obviously, is because Mr. Lesby has that bay in the back, he has three bays along Palmetto to access for semi deliveries. He doesn't get, I mean, I should have Robert testify as to what he's witnessed as far as how many deliveries he gets.
I've never seen any semi truck or any deliveries come down the alley, to be honest with you. He does come through with his trailers in the morning and, and approximately parks there, I don't know, 30, 40 minutes, loads up, and then in the evening, he has a trailer come in and unloads towards the back door. He also comes through my property to put his equipment in there, a pickup truck or something, but I don't really ever question him using my property, because I thought we could be good neighbors here, you know? I'm just trying to get it vacated for safety and security for my belongings in my building. And it's just, it's just a free-for-all back there, to be honest with you.
Right, they, he will still have full access, I mean, it's a 20-foot alleyway, I mean, a semi isn't gonna go down a 20-foot alleyway and make a delivery. They're gonna stop in Palmetto if they do have one, just like they do on Main Street when they deliver to the stores along Main Street for the brief time. His trailers can go in and back out if they need to, if that's what they're gonna, if they need to go to the back door, rather than use the three bays that are along Palmetto that are available for him. So that's, for us, it's, since we own both sides of that road, nobody else really needs it, he still has access from Palmetto and along the alley in the back to get there. Mr. Carnahan, I'm not sure, I know we tried to, Mr. Marshall tried to buy the property, but he has no rights to any of those access he has, his access is, I think Oak, is his main road, is Oak Avenue.
Just so, you know, like I said, we've been there since 2014, and when I bought the building, that was a cladium building next to us, Harrison, I believe, Cladium Farm. So when I bought the building, he come to me and said, listen, you know, I mean, we have the semis for delivery for cladiums and all that, we'll work around each other, but this alleyway is open for public use. So we never had an issue, we always worked with him, he's worked with us. He just now bought it, what, a couple of years ago, a year and a half ago? Speaking of rocks and kids and all that, we've never had an issue. I don't see anything, me and Robert spoke personally, me and Kim have spoke multiple times on this. Originally, he come to me and he wanted to, he was gonna sell me the corner, the little triangle piece directly behind my shop, so that way I could have full access coming and going in that back bay with whatever needed to be delivered and whatnot, as you see where the trucks and all that are pulling in the back bay and deliveries and everything. Then that's kind of shaded away to where he don't want to sell that piece now. And then, like I said, most recently, then he just tried buying the building, and he's like, well, then I'll just buy you out, just so I can vacate it, but that's our building, we're not gonna leave there, that's what the business has run out of. There's never been an issue with anybody busting windows or, and we've never had that experience since 2014. And like I said, my business runs off of that, and it's very vital. And like I said, I have no problem with getting rid of the other little cut road so he can fence that off, but if you block that alleyway, then we're gonna have to come up with a whole different deal because, yeah, that's, that hurts my business.
I didn't know if you had something or not, no Dana? No?
Just here for support.
Okay.
Would it be feasible, Robert, just if we vacate that short section, and you put a fence along the diagonal 105-foot thing?
Yeah, I offered it to Mr. Lesby, but he didn't want to do it. I wanted to vacate the whole alleyway and then fence the whole thing so he could have accessibility to the back of his building, and we both have a little bit more security. We didn't want to go along with it.
Okay, well, I'm confused, you own the.
Come to the microphone. Come to the microphone, please.
Are you?
Okay, I'm talking.
Clarifying, rather than vacating the angle portion and then vacating a lot, just a longer, and stopping the parallel road at a different.
Let me try to, let me try again, okay. So there's the, the short section, I think, Kevin, you've got your cursor on there.
Yeah.
So we vacate that. So, we vacate that, and then, Robert, you put your fence along the diagonal there, that right along there, and keep the alleyway. Would that work?
No, because it still doesn't offer me security to my building. You wouldn't believe what goes on back there when, when I'm not there. You know, there's tires dumped. There's been two giant young men walking through there with baseball bags hitting rocks on the top of my building. Every morning, I go with my bucket and I pick up all the trash. I've had my cell phone stolen, and somebody ran out the back, and the police department recovered it for me. There've been four-wheelers going through there, thirty, forty mile an hour cars. I don't know what they're doing back there, but I would think it was some type of drug dealing. And Mr. Lesby is not there during the day to see all this, you know?
Okay. Ready?
So, if the vandalism and the issues were not an issue, would we be still having this discussion to vacate an alley? That's what's driving it?
Yes, I mean, he would still want to fence it for, for privacy in, anyway. I mean, that's the main thing, is just to keep it secure, not only just because of the vandalism, but also for privacy. You know, when Mr. Lesby mentioned, we can't sell him because he can't drive. Those, those lots are zoned residential. So, we can't store, we can't park, we can't do anything on them, other than be kind of park-like. And that's kind of really why he liked the property, is, as many of you know, Mr. Marshall has classic cars and his Volkswagen's, and he does his repairs and remodeling and refurbishing inside the building. And if he can fence off that, then that area with the oak trees is kind of a peaceful place for him to, to relax when he's in between work. So, that's really, I mean, part of it is, even if the, I don't know if you could ever get rid of crime, but that may not ever be a possibility, but yes, so that would be, the main reason is to get it to where he can fence off from basically the back of his building all the way around to secure it.
So that I can, while I'm there working, I can open the doors and not be scared that somebody's gonna run in and rob me or do whatever, you know? That's all.
Are we aware of this, Chief?
Yeah, that's what I...
I mean...
Aware of, is someone gonna run in and rob him? I seriously doubt it. No, I do not believe the crime is as bad down there as is being portrayed. I do believe that his cell phone was stolen, and it was recovered and returned to him. The rest of it has not been reported to our agency. You would have to actually make those reports for us to know about it. Our officers do patrol the area. Our officers do drive down the alleyways.
Thank you.
And, and also, let's be honest. If, if we do this and he puts a fence up, that's not gonna stop people from going in there unless he puts an eight-high-foot fence. You know, locks on doors are only to keep honest people out. If somebody wants to get in there bad enough, they're going to. So, you know, I, I understand Robert's concern. You know, it's not an easy decision, but we do have a motion and a second on the, on the table. Is there any other discussion?
I'd like to give the council some options.
Okay.
I see my job tonight is giving you your options. First of all, if you vacate an alleyway, the center line becomes the property line. If you vac-, let's use this one, for example. If you vacate this alleyway, half would go to this owner, half would go to this owner. In this case, it all becomes Robert's. If you vacate this alleyway here, half would go to Mr. Lesby, half would go to Robert. Curious whether Mr. Lesby would be interested and Mr., and Robert, Mr. Marshall would be interested if Mr. Lesby gets the entire alley here to stop there. Mr. Lesby, would that give you adequate room to do what you need if you owned the entire alleyway?
Twenty feet.
So, it would only be twenty feet from the back of the building?
No, your building, it appears to me, your building is some number of feet from the alley itself.
But the proposal is excluding that whole fifty feet?
I realize that, but I'm wanting...
The alley, the alleyway runs directly behind the door.
Correct.
So, then it would be another twenty feet?
If you got the entire alleyway, I don't know how wide the alleyway is.
Twenty feet.
Twenty-foot alley.
Kim says it's twenty feet wide. If you got the entire alleyway, plus what you have there, would that make you happy?
We wouldn't be able to come, we still wouldn't be able to access and utilize the back, back door.
Well, it looks like it would give you probably thirty feet behind your building.
But it's not, it's not just me with the vehicles coming and going. It's the trucks pulling the trailers and everything else.
I just thought I'd try. I'm not trying to press you into it.
Here, with the trucks and the trailers, we're on Palmetto on the road. If we, and that's, if you look in the one picture, look how far back I am there, so if we come, then we have all of Palmetto blocked.
Just thought I'd try that as an option. You also have three other entries on the other side, don't you?
Correct. And that's in the front. That's where all the trailers go. The pictures show all that.
I just thought I'd try that, splitting the right-of-way differently. My recommendation would be if, if you do close the alleyway as Robert asks, you're basically giving him significant land, which is fine. I have no objection to that. My concern is, on the front, both of these folks have probably ten or twelve feet of land between their building and the right-of-way of South Main Street. Whoever poured this, I don't know if they got a building permit. It was before Robert. I'm not throwing rocks at Robert. Good man, I've known him for decades. But this is our right-of-way, and if you ever have to expand your road, this will not be an entrance to either building. And I'd sure like, if you're gonna give him land here, acknowledge that this is not gonna be his entrance at some point. The other factor is, how will this land be used? I would suggest, and I've heard discussions of fence it in, outdoor storage. You've got another problem with outdoor storage already on South Main Street, or two other issues. I would suggest doing Robert's land if you give him the right-of-way as a planned development ordinance, where you say, these are your uses, Robert. You may, and it governs what would be stored outside.
I think you might have missed, we, we can't do outside storage there. That is zoned currently residential. So, we can't do, basically, it's gonna be vacant unless we come back to Town Council and ask for an amendment to our zoning and land use. That was our main reason why we didn't wanna sell peace to Donald, is because he couldn't use it for what he was wanting to use it for, which was a driveway, because it's a residentially zoned piece of property.
What is residentially? All of this or this too?
The, no, just the, that piece in the back.
This?
That, that, and that, yes.
Well, if there's no outdoor storage, then I withdraw my concern.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we, I looked at that, and I talked to Robert about that when you raised that at the last meeting we had.
I just didn't wanna make South Main Street any worse.
No, and we don't, I know Robert does not want to make it worse either.
And I would like something in the ordinance, if you close the road, acknowledging Robert has plenty of access in the back and will not be using the front as access off of Main Street. There's simply not enough room.
Are you gonna make everybody else not access? I mean, like, like today?
No, whenever we have to expand.
Oh, okay, okay.
If, if and when.
Okay.
That's still Main Street.
Oh, yeah. I mean, right now, that would be, he would have to give up, because he doesn't own it, just like Mr. Lesby parks his trailers along the side, and he technically can't do that, because they overhang into the right-of-way. And the front, they over, I mean, that's a whole problem, I know.
Our town has a history of being rather loose with South Main Street.
Right.
And I think that is, in the future, going to be a concern. And it, just now is the time, if we're giving Robert land, to say, yes, your access will not be here.
Correct. Right. And if we had to get, get access or parking, then that would be what would the property in the back would be rezoned for.
And we can do that as a deed restriction, rather than a PD ordinance. I don't care, but something writing it down.
Yeah.
And just for everyone's benefit, this is, this will require two hearings. So, this is the first reading, and second reading will be in September.
So, this clarification was helpful, that the area that's projected to be fenced in, really, nothing can be stored there, so it's just fencing in the complete lot. Could an alternate be, if the primary reason is safety and security, just fence in the current building area? Because nobody's gonna be breaking into the empty land, right? You're not gonna store anything there, so, you know, and, and again, what, what would prevent you from just fencing in?
Because then we...
The current?
Because we have a, we get access from the back also. We, that's where all, his bays are also in the back.
Ah-ha.
The way these buildings are built is, Mr. Lesby's is on the side, and he has one, he has three bays on the side and one in the back.
Is that a human door in the back or a roll-up?
It's a roll-up door. It's a regular six foot, six-foot, it's a normal door. Yeah.
And Mr. Summers has owned this property how long? Does he, two years? A year.
Just one year, yeah.
And Mr. Lesby has owned his property? And, and, okay, so, okay, thank you.
I have an issue with saying that there'd be no access to that building off of Main Street. You have to, I mean, I can't see no access. I mean, that would be like selling, telling me my property, I couldn't get onto Interlake Boulevard. I think that's what you're saying. There's no access at all to those buildings, either one of them. You all aren't on the hot seat, but if this is a trend, and they wanna widen, I mean, don't the businesses have to have some access?
That's right. It would be in the back. Roberts would be in the back, Mr. Lesby's on the side.
So, you couldn't have storefront and have access?
They could have storefront, sure.
But, okay, so I'm just saying, no access to me means no access from Main Street.
No, 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 vehicles. Just vehicles. You don't know, you can't guarantee there's gonna be parking there in front.
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying access.
There's still room for human access, a lot for both. Sure, sidewalk.
Well, that's gonna be down the road, but I'm sorry, I don't agree with it. Like it, down at Home and Office Supply, there's parking. This was designed to have street parking, originally in the nineteen thirties, on the street. And then that was the parking, and then the access is to the building, but I can see, you know, what you're saying, but I don't know. I just, you and I have always disagreed on parking on the street, because that's the way the PD was designed in the thirties, is parking on the street. I know, we don't agree on that.
No, 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 no. Actually, I'm changing that position, but I think the town ought to have the right to control it. It's their property. Or it's town property.
I guess I'm uncomfortable with property that's been utilized by a successful business entity that has concern now that will impact their property if this alley's vacated.
I think my, my question is to quantify how often you need that alleyway for semis. If it's, you know, once a month, once a year, twice a month?
Well, it's also the oper-, the daily operations of, and the way the building is set up and has been utilized. The way that it's set up inside, that's why the pictures are inside there. You know, all of their air compressors, all of that, because that's how it was designed first, because they can come in and back into that bay. They can come in from this side of the alleyway or that side of the alleyway. They can back into that bay, do what they need. And I know everyone keeps referencing the other three bays. And again, that's why we put the pictures, because this equipment that's stored in there is stored, the trailers like that, and then the other bay to be in and out. And that's how, again, that it's operated for ten years. And so, that is our point, is that when we purchased this, that alleyway was there and was being utilized, again, by us and by the previous business. So, for a decade now, we have utilized it in that manner, and business, day-to-day operations of the business utilizing an existing alleyway that was made available and a part of the business when, and the property when it was purchased. So, now we are being asked to somehow restructure everything that is operated this way for ten years, and again, there are proposed security issues. And once again, we have operated there for ten years. We have filed no reports of any sort of vandalism. We have thousands of dollars of equipment in there all the time, and usually have a bucket truck that stays parked outside. It's not fenced in. We've never had any issue like that, and I feel like Mr. Marshall or Summers? I, I don't, I, I don't know. I said Marshall, or someone said Summers. So, that you're familiar with this area, when you purchase property here, you're familiar with this town. You've lived here, obviously, for a long time, so you know, you know, you're, you're professing now this sudden, you know, crime in waves or whatever. But again, we, I don't think that that is substantial, and there's not a lot, you don't have multiple police reports. We don't have multiple police reports of vandalism or problems with the property. And so, to present to, and argue, just because I'm gonna put up a fence for that reason, that's, there's no proof, you have no, other than the cell phone, to completely ask a property owner who has been there for over ten years to completely restructure everything just for, like, it was brought up, well, fence inside the building. If you, you can't store outside of that anyways. If, if security is the issue, you could fence, you know, the area, so someone doesn't walk in on him in the middle of the day and rob him. He could have the, have it fenced in. So, that is our point, is that we are being asked, again, after we have utilized this, and if this had sat vacant and abandoned, would be a very different story, but it is utilized daily.
Okay, so, I, I heard that you use that alleyway, I thought I heard you say you use that alleyway for large semis, like sod deliveries?
Yes, ma'am. There are deliveries, and as well as every day, our trucks and trailers.
Yeah, well, that, that's kinda what I was trying to get at, is I would, I'm thinking that your trucks and trailers could navigate into there. If, let's say, let's say it was blocked off, you know, the stubbed out. I'm asking, if, well, first of all, two things. Can your trucks navigate into there if it's stubbed off? And then, secondly, how often would a sod truck ha- have to go down that long alleyway?
Okay, the navigating into that, because likely, if the, because if he fences all of that, if, if it's vacated, then the ability to maneuver and back a truck with a trailer around and into that bay, without, when there is a fence there, you will run into that fence if you are gonna maneuver a truck and trailer from that side and try to come back into that bay, the way that they do on a daily basis. And the sod deliveries?
Well, it's not, it's not only sod. We got, we have pallets of fertilizer and all delivered. We've got tire orders that come, that big yard row trucks, that's what, and all of the access, they all have access to the back door there. That's the only door that they gotta key to on, the inside, anybody that's not an employee. So, and that's with my alarm system, everything is set up to where they have access to that back door. You know, because that's what they're used to running is that alleyway.
So, would, okay, so you, you want the alleyway so they can make a right, straight through? through?
Correct, that's what we do every day. Five o'clock in the morning, five-thirty in the morning, I pull up right here on Oak with my truck and trailer. We come down right behind the buildings, then that's where we start parking, to loading, working on stuff, we work outside right there. Because as you see, there is no room in front of the shop there on Palmetto, you know, because at one time, we tried to get a permit to fence it off, but you can't because of the right-of-way and where the telephone pole and all is, so we can't put anything on the outside there in front of the shops and all, because you can't fence enough, you can't do any of that.
So I'm trying to get to a compromise. If we stubbed off the road, let me back up. So actually, when your trucks are turning around in the morning, or at beginning and end of the day to get into your bays, you actually need the room to back onto his property?
Not down the alleyway.
That was my question too. So you're actually backing onto his property to get in there?
No, we don't, not pulling down the alleyway, we don't have to.
But if you said, okay, you got the whole, if you got the whole alleyway, I mean, you have that, that alleyway, and he has a fence there, you were saying that you would hit the fence?
Correct, right now where it's at, yes.
But that means, that means that you are encroaching on his property if a fence would stop you.
I'm talking about if it's fenced across the alleyway right there. So if, if the alleyway is vacated right there and it is all fenced in to maneuver the trailer, which now you can maneuver strictly on the alleyway, not on his property, does that make sense? I'm talking, because, do you see the, the alleyway? Because if that's all fenced in across, you no longer have access to the alleyway.
You mean like going at a north to northeast angle?
He, he would like to put a fence right there where your hand is, go straight up, okay?
Right there?
He would like to have a fence coming, exactly.
Okay.
Right there, across the alleyway.
That's the fence I'm talking about, yeah, we don't have to be on his property now.
But if that fence is right there behind my building and then going along the alleyway, yeah, that blocks everything off. You can't make that turn wide or nothing.
Because that would be his, he would be able to fence that behind that in as well, as well as blocking what the alleyway is right now. So then, yes, it does greatly limit, limit your maneuverability, and it would be impossible to maneuver a truck and trailer right there. In what is now the alleyway, you can do that without being on anyone's property.
I'm lost.
I like, yeah, you know, I like the idea of vacating alleyways because we put it on the tax roll, you get it on the tax roll. That's one of my, hate to say that to the public, but it's, it's on the tax roll then, and it makes the land more valuable, but the praiser would have to decide all that. But I'm just saying, that's typically when you join the one little short road and you make that property, I don't know if that would, at least it's on the tax roll.
And in argument towards that from the public, taxpaying business who's operated in that, I would like, you know, I feel like we have a voice in that as well. I understand what you're saying as far as, you know, the tax purposes and so forth, but we are still a local small business and our operations are dependent on that. And I think that that's a valid, you know, something for the council as well, is supporting your ability to function. And just as Mr. Harris pointed out, the lines you already see, if in the future you are limited already, if you decide to widen whatever road, from Maine to Palmetto, all of it, whatever is decided done in the future, you know, then you're just going to further limit what space that you have if something like that should arise.
Well, again, I'm trying to get to a compromise.
Now, I understand.
So, Mr. Summers, what if, instead of putting the fence right at the, let's say the north to northeast line, move it back from the property line, move it back and like 10, 15 feet from the, like, say to the corner of the house, corner of the building, rather than right up to the property line, would that give you enough room?
So the, the alleyway wouldn't be vacated, it would be vacated up to the edge of the, where the building, if you went straight back across the alleyway?
That's what I'm trying to say.
I would have no problem with that. I would have no problem with that. Like I say, when I, when I work there during the day and I have the two bay doors open in the rear, it's a free-for-all back there, that's all I can say, you know? Like tires dumped, I've had people racing through there, it's just, it's, you know, what do I got to do? I'm trying to work on something and somebody's bothering me back there, you don't know what's going on, so. I would have no problem moving it back to my prop, to the building line, yeah.
The issue that we continue to run, so what goes on then if he sells next month? And then whoever buys his place doesn't agree with that or is not okay with that?
You just don't vacate the alleyway, you vacate the alleyway farther to the building instead of at the property line.
But what if he sells? How does that matter?
Doesn't matter, it's, it's on the property line. The property, his property, the, his property line would go from the corner of his building, there'd be, make a jog, make a jog in the property line.
Is there any way that I'd be willing to meet with him and let's go and get measurements and stake it out to where we can see what we can actually try and work out in that aspect? I mean, I'm willing to do that, but just to say, no, we vacate the alleyway, now my business, you mean, shut my business down, that's not, no, that don't work good.
I recommend you pass this on first reading and allow the parties to discuss further and bring it back to council next month as you will do anyway.
You're saying pass it or table it, what?
Well, you've got to have two readings, so just declare this the first one, approve it on first reading, and then you can either adopt or deny next month. And that gives them a chance to visit, hash out their differences.
So we're, we're approving vacating the alleyway?
Only first reading, it takes two.
Okay.
You approve and then adopt on the second. And then I would also, if, if Mr. Harris feels like it's going to be a problem in the future, perhaps you could, we could look at that too, at the next, at the next reading.
Okay.
Which would be when we adopt whatever everybody decides.
Well, and, and when I was over there the other day, Mr. Marshall, you mentioned about you didn't have a problem if, if the Lesbys wanted to get down that road, if you had a gate, that you would have it open when they needed it. So that hasn't been brought up this evening?
Absolutely, I could fence it and he could come through there anytime. I have no problems with my neighbor going through there, it's just the people that I don't know that are going through there, that really shouldn't be going through there. Yeah, I have no problems with him coming through there, not at all. I'll put it in writing, whatever I got to do, it doesn't matter.
Would that include all of his delivery trucks? I think that's what.
I never saw a delivery truck in the year, but they do come in and, and load their mowers up in the morning and the evenings, but I've never seen a delivery truck. Of course it would, yeah, no problem.
So maybe he would have a key to the fence?
Absolutely. I, I don't even know if I'd put a lock on it, I just wanted to secure it.
You'd have to put a lock on it if you're going to achieve the security that you wanted in the night.
Okay.
Otherwise, there's no need for a fence.
I got no problems with my neighbors coming through there, not at all.
So that might be the compromise we're looking for, Joy.
This is a commercial property, it's not a neighborhood. And that's what I said, we've used this for 10 years now to just take it away and, like you said, he just said he wanted to put up a fence with no locks.
Yeah, well, you could-
That, you know, there, there's crime and everything else going on, which there is none.
Well, maybe there is, but if there isn't today, there'll probably be in six months or it could be.
The apartments and all right across, right directly in front of me. That, that is whatever you want to-
Can I say also that, that is the reason that the abutting property owners are notified, because that is what the legislation, even under the municipality government that you have, the, that is why the property owners are no, are notified in these situations for alleyways, right-of-ways, easements and so forth, because if someone is in opposition, that, that's the hinging point from a legal perspective as well. That's why, as property owners, we can oppose it, because that is how the, the governing statute is written concerning the vacation of these, and there, and this is the reason why, that the other property owners, if you've ever read through the statutes, that's why you publicly notify, because the, as property owners, we have the right to oppose that. And the calls for vacating it requires everyone's agreement, that as property or 50, or 50% of them to agree, if it's, what, I'm not a lawyer by any means, but I'm just saying that there are guidelines that give property owners rights when you share an easement or a right-of-way or an alleyway that has been established for so long. And like I said before, it has not been an abandoned alleyway by any means, it is utilized, and that's the reason property owners that share that have the right to oppose it, and that's what we're doing, is opposing that.
And on the other eye, if he put up a fence on both ends, like he said, and give us a key, well, now what happens if one of my guys runs into his fence, turn and two sharp accidents happen? Now who's going to be responsible for all of it? Is, you know, I mean, there, there's a lot that can go into that aspect of, I'll just give everybody keys and everybody can come and go, and now you're opening up gates and, and everything at five in the morning or when it's raining and everything else that for no, you know, I mean, there's no reason for them to be. There has not been, in what, 50 years, there, there's never been a, a reason for it. And I work perfectly fine with the previous owner on using the alleyway, there's no reason that I don't say the same.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second.
Mayor? Can I know who did the second? I missed it when we did it.
I believe I did.
You did, okay.
And again, this will be on first reading?
Yes, yes, it's a-
Any other comments from the audience? Clerk, go ahead and poll the council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Eberhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
It's a tough one, my answer is no. I, I don't like to get between neighbors or businesses, so it's tough for me, but based on all the information that's been provided, no.
Okay. I, I appreciate the fact, Robert, that you're willing to talk to them, and I appreciate the fact that the two of you will get together and see if we can't work out a common solution before the next meeting. This is by no means done, so I want you to understand that. But when, when you look at the pictures, I can see this being a problem both ways. And I, I, I think the two of you working together is hopefully going to be, you'll come up with a solution that's favorable for everybody.
On one other question, something that he offered prior, the one corner lot that's directly behind my back bay, you know, originally when he come to me and he's like, hey, I'll, I'll sell you that, I fence off everything else, we get rid of the, the alleyway. That was the first discussion that he comes to me with. I was okay with that. I said, that's fine, then that way I've got that whole access. But they mentioned something about you couldn't even drive over that, what if, I mean, are we able to drive and use that piece of property?
Yeah, we, uh, that's the reason we just passed it, so they can go talk among themselves. This is not something we should-
But that would have to be, but they're saying that the town, since that's a residential lot, so.
Yeah, we, it's something that's, we can't discuss right now.
Can I have clarity that on the second motion, because you've had three to one vote, so if there is no resolution made, it's essentially passed, is that what I'm understanding? That it's essentially vacated?
No, it's got to, it's got to come back to us. Got to pass twice. It's got to pass twice.
Okay, so you vote twice?
Yeah.
I just want to understand.
And if it comes back and the vote goes the other way, it, it won't happen.
Okay, that's what I was curious about.
Yeah, so it's, we're, we're, we're just basically out of standstill, right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want your pictures back?
No.
Okay, okay, thank you. Could, could Colleen see that letter that went down that way, please?
The opposition letter.
The opposition letter from the resident? It went that way.
I'd like to see a copy of that.
Colleen wants it back.
Wait a minute, do you want now?
From John Carnahan.
Pay attention.
They gave us a letter of one person who opposed-
We didn't see the letter down here.
And really, he doesn't have a dog in the fight.
He doesn't even touch it, Robert.
Okay, next we go to...
3D is withdrawn.
3D, but that has been withdrawn, so we don't have to worry about that. We'll now go to 4A, Resolution 2024-1B, or is that 18? 18.
Which you can do all in one motion, all three in one motion, if you so care.
I don't have a problem with that.
The banking, right?
Just a, just a quick note on the-
It all needs to be done, so.
I just will be abstaining from all of that because I'm a shareholder in that bank and I have Form 8 right here is filled out for all three of those resolutions.
Okay.
Just quickly for clarity, the bank wanted these placed back, it was, the motion, if you'll remember, was a little convoluted and they wanted to bring them back, so it was clear as to what they were doing with signees, signers, and, and, so that's why these are back, you approved them last month, but with modifications, and these are back so you could approve them as is.
I'd ask Bert, because I'm a signer on here, do I, do I have to abstain as well? Because I'm a signer on one of these.
No, ma'am.
Okay, just making sure.
You're good.
Thank you. Okay, well, I'll just do it, and, and we can discuss it, I'd like to hear from Councilmember Charles, but anyway, okay, I'm going to make a motion that we approve Resolutions 2024-18, Heartland Bank Authorization Signers, Resolution 2024-19, Heartland Bank Line of Credit, Resolution 2024-22, Heartland Bank Wire Transfers.
Clarification on the second one, there were two options, on 20, I'm sorry.
2024-19?
Yes, so the first one just had Vice Mayor Worley, mayor and finance director, or did you want me to, did you want to add me? They asked of the bank to, for the line of credit.
Okay, wait a second, I'll amend my motion to one or two.
That's the only, the rest of them are okay.
Then maybe we should take them one at a time?
All right, let's just do them one at a time, then we can talk about it. Resolu, okay, I make a motion, we approve Resolution 2024-18, Heartland Bank Authorized Signers.
I'll second it.
Okay. Have a motion in a sec, any further discussion? Saying none, we'll take you to the audience. All right, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Abstain.
Councilmember Eberhart?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll go to 2024-19.
So this is the one you're saying that-
This is the one that gave you two options.
Differences, we go from three to four.
Three to four. And why are we doing that?
The, the bank just said if you wanted that as an option, because you had, had added me as a signer to the other information as town clerk. You don't have to, it can just be the three, but she just gave you two options, one not adding me, one adding me, the town clerk.
And what, what are the differences of adding you? It just gives us another person?
Gives us another person.
And were you authorized with the old bank for line of credit?
No, I was never authorized. You put me on a signer of the last meet, on the, the first resolution.
But not for the letter of credit?
They just wanted to know, did you want to add the clerk to this one?
Prior, prior resolutions included the town administrator, you've removed the town administrator from all the resolutions, so this one just gives you the option if you want to add Eva, because you made Eva the signer on the other resolution. you the option if you want to add Eva, because you made Eva the signer on the other resolutions for the other items, so entirely, doesn't matter.
And we'd have to have two signers on approval for everything, is that correct? I mean, we always have to have two signers? So on this, on this advance on the line of credit, there has to be two signatures on that, or just one?
I think for check writing, it's only, it's two signatures required, but for the line of credit, only one is needed, just to draw down the funds.
So that gives us three people.
The mayor, the vice mayor, and Rachel. And I'm comfortable with that. I don't know that we need a fourth. We haven't even had a fourth in the past.
Okay, I'll make a motion for, we approve Resolution 2024-19 Heartland Bank Line of Credit, option number one.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, take it to the audience. Saying none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Eberhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Abstain.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2024-22 Heartland Bank Wire Transfers.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Further discussion from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Saying none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Abstain.
Councilmember Eberhart?
Yes.
Okay. Take, now we go to 5C1, Interlocal Agreement, North Main and Dow Hall.
This is the same interlocal agreement you saw a month ago. The county attorney and I have resolved our differences, and I recommend its adoption.
So the amount of money stays the same, and pretty much everything that you went in was stayed the same?
Yes. Well, the difference is, on maintenance, accepting it for maintenance, we put in some language that said, we're not accepting for maintenance.
Right, right. You won.
But the money is the same.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the revised interlocal agreement between Highlands County, Florida, and the town of Lake Placid for North Main and Dow Hall improvements.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the podium? Yeah, Kevin?
Just for quick information, the estimate on the contractor doing this project, because it's a little more complex than we originally anticipated, is about $99,000. County, the county has stepped up on the other piece of it. We were gonna have to remove the flashing beacons for the crosswalks.
Pedestrian crossing.
The pedestrian crossing, and, but I believe county transportation, or whatever the right department is, is going to pick up those. So we think we're still, Joseph DeFranzo, the Assistant County Engineer is in the back, saying it correctly, that it's gonna go forward, it's just a lot more money than we anticipated, like everything else that has increased in price. The county's stepping up and picking up the other piece of that.
And we thank you for that. Awesome.
Okay, take it to the audience. Saying none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Eberhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Thank you for sitting through all of this.
Next is 5D2, Resolution 2024-21 Limited and Conditional Pledge of Revenue to the Florida State Revolving Fund. Did I miss one?
Five D1.
Oh, well, I thought I went, okay, I did miss it, okay. Now, we'll go back to 5D1. We have, we have an opening on the RPAC.
Just a quick...
Todd Moore and Eva Cooper have expired.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we adopt the, approve the recommended motion, which is appoint Dana Riddle as the alternate member for Town Representative on the Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the podium?
I'd like to know some background on this. I wasn't aware that we had an opening, number one. And so, and to be honest, though, I did see the other day, just like, I think, like Thursday or Friday, I went to look for, to see if the budget meeting had been posted, and then I saw a blurb that says, we have an opening, contact Eva. So, because, so, so based on, it was only advertised just on the website? Because I don't remember coming to council that we're gonna have an opening, and how do we, and I'd ask, actually like to see somebody from the outside. Todd was from the school, from the outside, so rather than have Kevin, Eva, and Dana, not that Dana wouldn't be lovely, but rather than have three, you know, employees from our town represent us, is try to get somebody from the outside also.
So if I may?
There wasn't any interest.
Todd and Eva's terms are both expiring, so this is the question, this is actually gonna be raised as a, so we have had, it's, I believe posted on Nextdoor and the town website?
Website.
On both, that we've asked the community to participate for an applicant for an outside. So the recommendation...
I mean, I know we did for the town administrator. I don't ever recall seeing for this...
It is on the website.
It's on the website, but not on Nextdoor.
Yeah, I did put it on Nextdoor.
I did not see it either on Nextdoor.
I'll double check.
Yeah, no, and I saw the town administrator, that was out there, and, because we just appointed you from Harry's position, right? And Eva expires in December, and the other guy expired in July at the same time that Harry did. But anyways, I mean, I personally would like to see somebody also from the outside the town, hopefully, and maybe we could better communicate, so that we could get town employees to represent us, but also somebody from the community.
How quick do we need to do something?
Okay, if I may finish? Thank you. So, the recommendation was to make Dana an alternate. We were still looking for somebody from the outside. We've had one person contact us to fill that other voting position, which is Todd Moore's position. Eva's, the recommendation was for Dana to fill Eva's as an alternate, not as the voting member. So just to be clear, we were looking for one town employee and one at-large member to fill that position with Eva as a alternate. The question I had that went along with this is for attorney, because Eva would be my alternate, and it is a question, because we may want to withdraw that. If she's my alternate, can we discuss? If, okay.
Why don't you let, let me look? I just read through that, if an alternate can discuss. Give me just a minute, you'll have to go to something else.
That's fine, because that's the question. It is different, just for the council's discussion, so it is different than the alternate board members that sit on the LPA, because they are the alternate for anybody to sit on the LPA, where this would, Eva would be my alternate, so she would be voting in my place, and that's a very distinct difference, in that she votes in my place, as opposed to anybody that's missing on the thing, if the way I understand it.
That's something that's coming before the council, or before the body, not, I appreciate your distinction.
Yep, so that's, that's a question, right. So that's a question that we had today at the staff meeting, otherwise I would have already addressed it and tried to have an answer. So it is not a rush, you can wait till the next meeting, you can wait for, and again, I have nobody, other than Dana, had volunteered to be an alter, either one, if she's a voting member, as, like Todd was, then there is no question. We could never have a discussion, and we have to have discussions about recreation and how we do the CIP on staff-level discussions, and that would bar us from having a discussion other than at this public meeting, or at the RPAC public meeting, which kind of defeats our purpose from the town perspective. So, the whole thing can easily be pushed to, our next RPAC meeting is in, they're quarterly meetings, the next RPAC meeting is Thursday, and then we've got three months to decide. So there's no push on this, there's no rush on that, and there is a question about, we may want two people from the general public to be represented there as the alternate, as opposed to two staff members, because it does create issues in that, in that standpoint. So I'm fine if we want to table this whole thing.
That would be easier from a, from a, like, day-to-day operations standpoint, if you had no staff members and two outside people from, from the public, because you wouldn't have sunshine law at any problem.
That's why we need the clarification, because if I want my alternate to vote the same way that I think the town should, then I would want it to be my staff member that's voting the way that I would vote. That's where I see the distinction in, in how that alternate sets up. I think we need to study that and give the attorney time to do that, so that's why I think it would be appropriate to push this back into the next meeting. We have two more months easily. I say two more months. I'd like to push it to September, because once you make a recommendation, it has to go to the county commission for approval, so it goes on their, theirs after ours. So it would push till the September meeting, there's no rush.
So, so RPAC, when I read it, Kevin, it says that, you know, each town has two, so we get two members and one alternate. And in the past, our two members were Todd and Harry, so one from the community, one from the town, and then the alternate was, was Eva, okay? What you're saying is not clear to me. I always thought an alternate be, would be if one of those two members couldn't make it, then that's the person that goes to make the town have two participants. But you're saying her alternate is for you, or would it be for either? Maybe it's because we don't have that third right now? I mean, because I guess I was thinking, she's a member now, you're a member, that's the two members that would go to this RPAC meeting.
That's, I think, where we need clarification.
Okay.
The Attorney General in AGO 88-45 opined, since the alternate is authorized to act only in the absence of a board member or commission member, there is no meeting of two individuals who exercise independent decision-making authority at the meeting. There is, in effect, only one decision-making official present. Therefore, a meeting between a board member and his or her alternate is not subject to sunshine. Absolutely amazed, because I sure thought it turned on to be discussed in the meeting.
You're so strict on everything else.
Now, that doesn't answer Colleen's question.
No, it does not.
If you've got one alternate that would replace two members, I don't think this would fit.
I would agree, and I think we need to read those bylaws and make sure that they're interpreted correctly according to the law, so that's, I agree with that 100%.
I withdraw my motion, table it to September meeting.
I withdraw my second, and table for September.
Okay. All right, where are we at? Next is 5D2, Resolution 2024-21 Limited and Conditional Pledge of Revenue to the Florida State Revolving Fund.
So for those of you that weren't on the council when this was, identical one was approved on the wastewater fund, this is a pledge of revenue by the town to repay the loan. It ties in with the next one, which is a bulk service agreement. So it's conditional, because we are the loan and grantee to the SRF fund, so we have to approve, we are receiving the grant. We conditionalize it because the agreements that we have in place with the Camping Conference Center says that they are going to pay us, we are gonna pay the loan. So these are identical to the wastewater. This is in order to get the water line that's put out to the Camping Conference Center. So these two agreements, the resolution and the agreement next to it, are what is needed to finish the loan application, so that then we could go out to bid on the, on the water line to the Camping Conference Center.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-21, the Limited and Conditional Pledge of Revenue to the Florida State Revolving Fund, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the podium? Hearing none, take it to the audience. Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Eberhart?
Yes.
All right, next is 5D3, Water Bulk Service Agreement with the District Advisory Board of Southern Florida District Church of the Nazarene Incorporated.
And this is the bulk service agreement that goes along with that. You'll notice we, there are some minor changes that the attorney might make, have to make. We did not get the, any comment or modifications back from the Camping Conference Center, so I do have that, allow the attorney to make minor modifications, so we can believe that.
So I'll make the motion to approve the Water Bulk Service Agreement with the District Advisory Board of Southern Florida District Church of the Nazarene Incorporated, and allow the attorney to make minor modifications as needed for completion, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Bring it back, poll the council, please.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Eberhart?
Yes.
Okay. Now we'll go to, Mr. Attorney, you got anything?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, Kevin?
Okay, update on the dragboat races, which are still scheduled for September 7th and 8th. I have before you, just to see, you can see as a kind of conceptual, we actually have a conference call tomorrow with all of the parties associated with this. The town is providing the park, I did a layout to make sure we had some basis, and this has been emailed to the Drag Boat Racing Association, the TDC, and the other parties that are gonna be on the call, which include the chamber. So we do not know yet a number on vendors, or a number on food trucks. They were shooting for four or five food trucks. So we have a place laid out for them over here on the left. We have a place for vendors, depending on, we've only had one request so far that I know of, but it's still a little early on there to put vendors over in this area. Then we started laying out where and how many boat, boat-trailer combinations we could put in, and I wanted to make sure that we had enough space for, there are 50 boats anticipated. And so we have these areas, these areas, I mean, you can see the proxy numbers, they're generous in spacing, so there you can easily fit, when I say four boats, they can easily put four boats in there, or two boats, and this in here. So we have easily space to fit their 45 to 50 boats. I didn't place anybody in here, so we do plan to block the road, similar to what we do on the Fourth of July, so we will have barricades available for Allen that would block the road here. Visitors, parking would come in, make the turn here and go back, and that leaves a large area in here for cars to park. It's still a, still a very large field area before you get up into the soccer field. They are making their arrangements for, the dragboat racing is making arrangements for the sheriff's boat. They may have sheriff and fish and wildlife. They've had discussions, so the ambulance, I believe, is in place, or pretty close to being in place. The other item, they've got to make arrangements for rescue diver, and so, but those, those items are in, they, they mark out the lines. They were actually gonna try and come last weekend and do three or four boats to run it, just to see what it looked like, but Chalk of the Storm Debbie kind of shut that down. So, but, but they're getting kind of flushed out on what they're, they have left to do as far as their plans and where they're going, but we'll have more information, and I'll give you an update just by email, based on where the conversation leads us tomorrow after, on the next conference call.
So I would recommend the council authorize the town, he doesn't know this is coming, the town administrator to allocate space to state, county, other public entities, as well as private entities at the park for the race. Somebody's got, needs to be able to... Somebody's got, needs to be able to say, "Council authorized me to put you here." Buck needs to stop somewhere now, unless you want to do that, boss.
I don't have a problem with it.
I'm not clear on what you're saying. Authorized space for county, say that again.
Whoever is going to be parked and set up, like food trucks?
Yes.
Somebody needs to designate, "You go here, you go here."
Totally agree. I mean, this whole thing, if we don't have somebody directing traffic, telling them where to go, you know, including local police presence, whatever that's going to be.
And let me change that to the town administrator, comma, or his designee. He may tell the chief of police, "You go do it."
Yeah, that's fine, but I agree.
I don't mean to overburden.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we can't delegate this to TDC or somebody. This is our property. We need to know what is the plan. And when there is a congestion, because this is the first I've heard now that, which is fine, the road's going to be closed going in. Well, we also probably need to get some communication out on our websites and next door. They've done a good job of communicating on their Facebook, and you know, they've got, last I saw, 125 people said they were coming and 2,000 liked it. This is on the organization's website, the Southern Drag, and visit sebring.com is communicating, and it's talking about what time it opens up on Saturday and Sunday, you know, and where to go. So it's directing people to come here. So that's where, it gets me a little nervous of, if we're talking 50 boats, if we're talking, you know, 1,000 people or whatever, it's going to get crowded. And then you have the normal people, right? Not the normal, but just regular people use that way to go home and things like that. So it'll be cut off after the circle?
Yeah.
Is that what you're thinking?
The road gets actually.
Somebody coming down Heartland if they want to go to the park?
The circle doesn't affect anything. It gets blocked down here because anybody that's coming to the event will have to come around the sidewalk.
And then that's where.
Right in here, this, right in here, and they come back in to visitor parking, similar to what they do at the Fourth of July. So visitor parking will be back here. It won't have any impact on the circle.
Okay.
Unless for some reason it backs up here, and it shouldn't, this is a large parking area.
Will they have parking attendants that will be directing people on where to park?
That's a good question, and I'll have that for them tomorrow to find out what they, how they anticipate this and what they do at their other events.
Okay.
So, being the first one, it's in the further south, they're guessing there, I mean, it's a, really, they're not sure if it's going to be a very well-attended event, or they're just not sure because they've never run one this far south. So it's a, they're kind of in the dark on some of it. So we're going to block the road here, and then we would block this one here. So, because these people, we want them to come here. If we block this back here, it gives some extra boat parking space in here.
Yeah, the challenge to just be careful of is the person who, it's the weekend, I'm coming to put my boat in, and they got past the turnaround. So you're going to have kind of some of that, that like, no, 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 it's closed. The Sebring's also advertising Bishop Park, too, you know, directing people to go watch over Bishop Park, so you've got some good activity. And then is somebody making sure that all of the proper insurance policies and coverage is in place to protect the town?
Yes, they've already provided us with an insurance policy, but I'll double-check it.
I got asked that question, Lloyd, and also I was asked, who's going to clean up? And that, I think, is part of the contract, is what I was told, is that they're supposed to clean up after themselves, like basically the event people are supposed to take, clean up.
That's correct.
Okay. Chief, are you anticipating a special detail in this regard?
I spoke with them and was told they did not need any assistance from our agency.
Do you concur with that? I just was going to say.
I do not.
Do you buy that?
I do not. I believe we need at least four officers down there each day.
My concern is if there's going to really be that much people, there's going to be congestion down there, there's going to be possibly frustration, and I think that you need to put your folks on alert.
They already are.
Yeah.
I think to protect the town, the integrity of the town, absolutely, yeah.
So they are providing their own enforcement?
They didn't think they needed it.
Also, in addition?
That was not clarified. They were, I was given the message to contact them about what they need. I did, I helped them get in touch with the people for the county, for the boats and all that, and I asked them if, how many officers they estimated we would need, and they said none, we don't need your agency. So.
I think we need to remember that Chief has a responsibility to our town and make sure that Chief understands he has our authority to do what you need to do to protect our town.
Absolutely.
I agree. And find out how many officers are planning.
Well, as I said, I can get four a day down there if needed.
Are you included in the planning calls or no?
Am I included in the?
Planning, you said you have planning calls.
No.
No, he has not been included.
Did you need a motion, Kevin, or anything, or were you just information?
I was information. Our attorney recommended that you do a motion. So that would be on the attorney's, again, I defer to him to the legal side of that.
A motion, a motion to what effect does he need?
Authorize the, to authorize the town administrator or his deliki to be able to determine who parks where and control our park during this event.
I think we all agree that the town administrator needs to be empowered to direct his staff. I would think that, I mean, that we're saying it publicly, but that's kind of what we do anyway, but do we, I don't think, we don't need a motion, do we? We just need.
We need a motion to allow the county, the town administrator to tell people that are not on staff, our guests in our town, where they're going to place their particular vehicles. And so to that end, I would make that motion.
Second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion from the podium?
I want to make sure that it says town administrator or his designee.
Right, that's the way it was worded.
Town administrator designated to control the park and parking for the event, for the event. Is that correct?
Yes, and I would assume he's probably going to do a plan for that in advance, so it's not a last minute.
Kind of what he's got, but yeah, we can fine-tune it.
And it will be fluid.
Yeah. Okay. All right, take it to the audience. Saying none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Eberhart?
Yes.
Kevin, could you just email this chart? This is a good chart.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I wanted to say that, too, because we can just forward this to people that ask us to.
Well, and I will do that after our meeting because I just, based on comments and conversations tomorrow, this may change a little bit, and then I will send it to you along with an update from the meeting.
So this has been on the Sebring website, and it's been on the organizer's website, and it will be on next door. I'm trying to know, to make sure that people, let's say they planned their weekend to use the park, and then they get there and, oopsie, I'm trying to give advance notice wherever possible.
And I have asked for the flyer that they're using on the TDC website, the Visit Sebring website, so I'm waiting that to come to me so I can have Eva place that on next door and our website. So I don't have that in my possession.
Okay.
They have it in their possession, but the TDC lane at the TDC or Air Adventures is the one that's promoting it, so I will have that, I expect, tomorrow.
Should there be something like posted the week or two weeks in advance at the boat ramp? Or, I'm trying to think of ways to get, give advance notice.
That's a good idea. Is there a bulletin board down there? I think that would be a great idea so that, you know, just.
We can, we can put a large pavilion and for the people that may or may not be noticed. It's been my experience a couple times that I've actually had boats sitting here that I've stopped and talked to on the Fourth of July, waiting there like, well, it's blocked off. I said, "It's going to be blocked off all day, so you need to go across the lake to Bishop Park." So, anyway, but yes, and so we can put a sign up that says boat ramp will be closed on that weekend.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have something concerning this?
I'm Rosemary Heath, 588 Central Point Drive. Originally in the paper, they said that the roads were going to be paved, bleachers were going to be put up, and the area that has all the vegetation next to the beach was going to be cleared so people could watch the boats. That's what was in the paper.
It's never been discussed by me or the council about clearing any land.
No, they were going to do it all. They were going to put bleachers, they were going to clean up, put, they were going to pave. This was all in the paper. I don't have the article with me, but it was all in the paper.
I don't know where the paper got that information, so.
No.
The bleachers, the bleachers are going to be moved by us, by Harry, so there will be bleachers down there. We just move them from our ballfields. They're not being used that day, so we're going to move the bleachers. I don't know about road paving, I don't know about clearing any other.
Well, I know, I know, it's like, how are they going to do this?
I don't know where that came from, so whatever got printed, it got printed, and I'm not responsible for that.
So the bleachers are going to be where the people would go on the beach so they could watch?
Sit and watch, yes.
Okay, are there going to be bleachers at Pope, Bishop Pope Park? No, it's, everything's going to be contained in Lake June Park. Now, my other question is, is a playground going to be available for children? And if it is, are you going to have the mulch down? Is it going to be safe? I mean, you have a playground there.
The playground has been mulched.
Pardon me?
The playground has been mulched.
Oh, okay, I was there, day before yesterday, it wasn't, the other one was mulched. You have both of them mulched now?
Both of them are mulched, so you were there before Friday.
Okay, so I was just concerned for children getting hurt.
Okay.
Okay, I'm happy. Thank you very much. Oh, and I wanted to say, I was really thrilled to see how clean the town was, how mulch was placed all over the town. You did an excellent job, and I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
And thank you, I appreciated that.
I'd thank those guys.
You did it all?
They're all back there, the guys who are in charge, yeah.
Wow, okay.
All right, do we have any comments from our department heads? No? Okay, I'll bring it back to the podium.
Just two things. One is I have been invited and accepted to attend the Highlands County Sheriff's Citizens Academy. It's a seven-week of classes, behind the scenes, everything the sheriff's department does, so I was, and Commissioner Roberts is actually in my class, so that's nice. The second thing, I was just wondering if there's any update on the town administrator position.
Yeah, good. We have interviewed several. We are in the process now of grading them, and hopefully by, while we're going to do it by next meeting, I will bring back a recommendation.
Is that a council decision?
Yeah, so I would, yeah.
It's my decision, but I bring it for you guys to, yes.
So I would just like to clarify that because the Muni code says that the mayor will appoint the following positions, town attorney, town clerk, chief of police, attorney, with the consent of town council.
Right, that's, so I will, I will make my decision and I will bring it to you.
The mayor will appoint with the consent of, which I read is we're approving, and I would like to interview, you know, I'd like to talk about the process, if the process, I'm fine with narrowing it down to a couple people, but then if that's somebody that each of us is going to work with, I would like to recommend that each of us separately meet with the person and do an interview so that we can, you know, approve. So, I mean, I guess this is the first time we've had a position open from the outside. It's all been internal promotions, which is good, but, you know, I would like to interview, you know, the final candidates that we think are worthy of this position.
I guess we could arrange that, we'd have to see if.
Are we going to bring them, were you going to bring them in or just zoom?
At four different times.
Are you zooming them or bringing them in individually? Are you narrowing it down to a couple?
Both.
Yeah. I mean, we could really just bring them in, and we can each have 30 minutes or an hour to boom, 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 meet with them, not together.
You could also do it in open council meeting. We're all four of you, talk to, say, the top five or three or?
That'd be a lot easier.
That might be intimidating to the person if we're going to do a town council.
Suck it up, Ben.
But, I mean, I personally would want to talk to the person and ask some of the tough interview questions, too.
It sounded to me like you were going to make the decision and then just bring it to us and say, "This is what I've decided."
This is the.
But if, but if we didn't approve?
Out of the 30 applicants.
Okay.
Or 30, however many there were, this is the one that I felt would be, would fit our family group.
But if we didn't approve, you would reevaluate?
Have to.
Okay.
Well, how can we approve somebody we don't even, haven't even talked to?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We can do that if they're willing to come over and meet with you individually.
Or, or at a council meeting.
Or at a council meeting.
Yeah, just, I think at a council meeting would be a lot easier because, you know, that way they would, they would come and meet with all of us at one time, you know.
Well, one thing, if we did it with the council member meeting, is that they would be asked a question, everybody would hear it instead of being asked a question over and over and over. I don't know.
I'm fine either way. I think it might be, and if you fast-forward, we do it at a council meeting, and if it's multiple, do we bring one in, and then we say, "Thank you," and they leave, and we bring the second? I guess I'm feeling that it'll probably get narrowed down to two or three, something, so then those are the final candidates that we would interview. So just thinking logistically of talking to those two or three at a council meeting, which is fine. You know, we'd bring one in, and then we'd excuse them, bring the second one in, excuse, bring the third in, and then have a discussion to make the decision then. Is that what we're thinking?
Well, that's, that's up to you.
I mean, yeah, I'm just talking out loud as a process.
Sounds logical to me.
Okay.
Mr. Interim Administrator, what would you recommend we do rather than, I mean?
If you go that route, then we're going to have to do some type of scoring system, which we can present you some type of scoring system. So that you can score them and then evaluate them. I don't, that's going to be a, in my experience, they've done individual interviews, and you score them individually so that you don't kind of get into the public forum of interviews. It's a very difficult interview when you're doing it. In my experience, it's a difficult point to do it when you're doing it in that interview. It's better to do one-on-one. I think you get a better feel and a better discussion. It's entirely up to you, so.
But you're recommending we do it individually rather than bring it to the public forum.
Well, either way, I got to give you a scoring because, or you can bring it back in and discuss it at the meeting and make a decision. I think the process works better if you're doing individual interviews as opposed to sitting here and going back and forth and then trying to make a decision on those. So it's entirely up to you, but if you want to, like I said, we can schedule it either way. We can schedule them so they're going to be here, do four interviews in the morning, four interviews in the afternoon if it's two people. Or three, right now, I think we were leaning towards two out of the interviews we've done. I think two kind of, or isn't above. But if you can't come to an agreement on those two, then I've seen it where it goes back to a second round. So it's entirely up to you.
I mean, ideally, I think the individual is better. It's better for the person, too, that they're not sitting in front of six people, you know, that is probably even videoed in that. And, you know, I've got, I've got a lot of experience, and what we would do is we'd bring the people in, right? You bring in two people, and we're in different conference rooms, and, you know, one is with one, one's with another, and then they have a schedule, you're going to meet with Nell at this time, now you're going to go to this conference room, this conference room, this conference room. And so then the second one, the same thing, and then we later, as a group, get together and have that discussion, or scoring is also another way we did it. We did both scoring, and then we got together to have that final decision. Now, that we couldn't, probably couldn't do outside of the meeting, you know, but at least the scoring and that, but, I mean, ideally, to me, it would be individual interviews.
That's fine with me.
I wanted to come back and support the individual interview because of something I believe you brought up, and that is each of the interview. I believe you brought up, and that is, each of the interviewees would have the right to sit in the audience. And that works to the benefit of the one that goes last and to the detriment of the one that goes first.
Absolutely. No, I'm totally, that's fine. If I was interviewing for a job, I wouldn't want to be in a public forum. And it's more personal, like, I don't know. I agree. I'm good with it, whatever.
Well, they may want to meet us and say, no, I don't want the job after that.
We may run them all off.
How many did we have that applied?
We had about 35. I didn't, I can't tell you the totals. So Eva separated them out, took their, the ones that had governmental experience, which narrowed it down to probably 10 or 12 maybe, that had some level. We had people that applied that obviously didn't read the job description. And then some that just were completely unqualified. So even then I had discussions, and the mayor had discussions, where you narrowed that down. We did a Zoom interview with a lady from Maine, and then we did two in-person interviews with Florida candidates. So, again, we can have a discussion, and I would, if it's okay with the council and the mayor, and the, then I would probably say, based on our discussions this morning, that we would bring you back too, to set up interviews with.
Are those locals? So what happened to the person from Maine?
Just a discussion about what's the best fit for the town. Qualified, absolutely. And just the three of us having discussion after, based on the interview, we had a set of 12 questions that we asked each of the candidates. So we were kind of, so we based it all on the same type of questions. We also gave them all the latitude to answer anything else, provide us other information. It wasn't completely as rigid as some of those type of interviews can be. So, anyway, I'm just looking at dates. If, I know we have, the week before the meeting is Labor Day, Monday, so there's no, that week may be difficult. I don't know about the last weekend and the last week of August, before you get into that Labor Day weekend, Tuesday or Wednesday, 27th, 28th? I'm just looking for a date that may work, or if y'all can all make yourselves available if, on one of those dates, because we're going to have to set it firm.
I can be available those days.
I'm good.
What were those dates, August 12?
27th, 28th is Tuesday, Wednesday.
In September?
No, August. So that we can have a, so you can make a, you'll do the interviews, and then on the 9th, we'll have the meeting.
27th and 28th, you said? Is that Tuesday, Wednesday?
That's a Tuesday, Wednesday.
Well, there's a budget workshop on one of those days, the Wednesday.
Well, hopefully that'll be done.
Hopefully we don't need it, but it is on that Wednesday.
Yep.
At night, right?
Yes, at night.
Yeah, that, actually, that, that 28th is going to be a tough day for me. That's the only tough day. I'd have to do it in the morning.
So, well, we can schedule them all in the morning. If we can, we'll figure out enough rooms that you can interview, and we'll split them. So you'll go from one to the other and, so, that shouldn't be a problem.
Good.
One, two, three, four.
That was on my head.
Basically, we need four hours in the morning. So start at eight, finish by noon.
Okay. We'll get with the two applicants, and he'll get back, he'll get back with.
Send us the resumes.
Anything else?
Nothing.
I don't think I have anything else. That was my other question, so she took it.
Deborah?
No.
The Nextdoor thing is, is good, that you give the links for the packets and all that. I'm wondering if you could just put up the agenda. That would give them incentive to see if they want to go into the packet.
That's kind of hard to do. They're still going to have to click on something to get to that document.
No, can't you like do a screenshot of the agenda or a?
It's not an easy thing to do. So if we start doing those kind of things, and start putting stuff here and there, it's going to end up, I'm being honest, it's going to be, end up like the last website, where we're just putting stuff on. And so I've been trying to keep it uniformed. I just don't know how to do that. So it's going to either have to be a completely different page for them to go to, that they're going to need to know to go to another page to look at the, the copy of the agenda.
No, I think, what I'm saying, you put the link up on Nextdoor for the packet.
On the Nextdoor app or the website?
I'm talking, no, I'm talking about Nextdoor.
Okay.
You already put the link up.
Yes.
And then add a photo or something that just outlines the agenda, not, not the entire packet, just the-
On the Nextdoor app, that's more flexible. It's the website, it's not as flexible.
No, 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 I'm talking about the Nextdoor app.
Yeah, Nextdoor app, I probably could do a copy paste. I'm okay with that.
Yeah, because I think that might give-
I'm concerned with the website, because to move some of those things on that website is not.
No, no. What I'm thinking is that-
I misunderstood.
That, yeah. Because what I'm thinking is that, okay, I see the link, and it's like, oh, whatever. But if I saw the agenda, and it would pique my interest that there's a certain discussion about the tower or whatever, then I would take the time to click on the website and get the whole.
It's going to be a long post, though. You're going to end up having, you'll have to look for that link.
The, the one-page agenda.
Sometimes it goes into two. So I'm just, I'm just saying, this agenda was two pages.
Okay, well.
So it's going to be, just to let you know what it's going to look like, they'll need to, if they like it, they'll have to find that link is going to be at the bottom. Or I could maybe put it at the top. I'll play around with it. That's all I can promise.
I have a question about Nextdoor. We're, we're all so excited about Nextdoor. Nextdoor is limited by where you live. So when you put things on Nextdoor, how do we know that, is that just for the people that live in the town of Lake Placid?
Yes.
Because I never see what you put on Nextdoor.
Yes, it's within the town of Lake Placid. I sent them the strap, the, the map, and it's within the town limits.
And I guess I have to join that.
I did send a, another file to them. Remember, we get Nextdoor free? I sent another file that I got from the county that picked up the surrounding areas, because we are regional utilities, and that would be nice to be able to do Bull and Water knows. That was months ago. I've emailed them a couple of times, and I've got no response. So I don't know if it's too big of a wide of an area.
Yeah.
They allow for government entities to have whatever their boundaries were. I've asked for something special, and I've never, that special being expanding that area.
That's, that's odd, because I'm, I'm Nextdoor, and I see people commenting from Buttonwood Bay, leisure, Placid Lakes.
County. They're in the county.
Me too. I'm on Nextdoor too, and I, and I agree. I, I mean, I guess basically I'm in Sylvan Shores area, because I live in Lake Blue, but they go from Buttonwood Bay to Placid Lakes, to all, all these other places. But I've never seen what Eva has put out on Nextdoor. Maybe, maybe I just, I don't see it.
Unless that they are GIS, because it's Nextdoor, so I, I have no control over this part of it. And all I understand is Placid Lakes, Buttonwood, all of those places you're naming are in the county. So that, that file that they ever, whatever they did, throws it out in the county. Town of Lake Placid is, I got 400 and something people
Right.
on the Nextdoor app.
Right.
So whoever's within the town limits, and that's what they picked up on. So I will email this gentleman again, but I did end up getting a, a, a file from the county that the gentleman asked for, gave it to him. I've emailed him a couple of times about expanding that, and I have no response. So.
Interesting.
And it is something that's free to us as government entities, but evidently, you know, I haven't been able to accomplish.
And do you keep track of that for public records sake?
Of one town, yeah, I'm a, I get.
Nextdoor, I'm, I'm very comfortable in Nextdoor, Nextdoor app with public records, because, first of all, the only thing on our end is just what I post. Now, if somebody posts something to me, or to, to us, then that comes. But I, I don't see all that conversation between people in general.
But you keep copies of every day and everything that's on that app?
Yes, yes. I got to double-check how to do that. Facebook is a lot harder to manage than this Nextdoor app. So I got to.
Just comply with the law or don't do.
Okay, anything else?
I'm done. Thank you.
Are there any citizens in the audience that would like to speak?
We run them all off.
Are you sure? All right, is there any other business to come before the council? Meeting adjourned.